Okay, we're ready to start. Thank you, everyone. Good morning and welcome. My name is Mike Terry. I'd like to welcome each of you to this regular monthly Planning Commission hearing. The Planning Commission is an advisory board appointed by the Board of Commissioners, and it's our duty to investigate every request that comes to the county for a land use permit or for a zoning change. And that's what we're going to do here today. Keep in mind that this will go to the Board of Commissioners when we're through. That'll occur in two weeks, so if you're here for any case, you will need to come back again in two weeks, and that will be on August the 15th, because the Board of Commissioners will take it up then. Their decision is always the final and binding decision, so that's very important that you come back for that. It's our custom to invite various members of the local clergy to come and speak to us and open our meeting with some appropriate comments or a prayer. And so it's my pleasure at this time to introduce and invite up Dr. Diane Parish, who is the Minister of the Kennesaw United Methodist Church, obviously in Kennesaw, Georgia. So Pastor, if you want to make your way on up. After the pastor finishes with her prayer and comments, I'll invite Officer Ott from Cobb County Police Department to come to the center of the room, and he'll lead us in our pledge of allegiance. When you see him come forward, please stand as you're able. Good morning. Glad to have you here. Please go ahead.
Good morning. Thank you so much for having me come this morning. It's a beautiful day outside, so let's get going in here so we can get outside and play, maybe by the end of the day, right? Would you please bow your heads and pray with me? Heavenly Father, we give you great thanks for this day. It's fun to know that there you were hovering over us, waiting for us to open our eyes today, to see what you had in store for us, to see the creation that you have. Lord, I thank you for these commissioners, for this advisory team that is here today, and I pray, oh God, that they listen with your discernment, with your wisdom. Whenever any man or woman decides or feels the call to go into public service, most times they don't get a manual of how to manage, they get a manual of what is expected. So, Lord, as Solomon prayed to you, "Lord, give me a discerning heart, how to govern these people that you have given to me." So, Lord, let us today, in all decisions and everything that is presented today, Lord, let it be in your plan. I pray, God, that your wisdom and discernment would permeate every part of this meeting today, and that you, at the end of the day, would be glorified, and that for the residents of Cobb County, that we will benefit from the decisions that are made today, or the encouragements that are made today. So, Lord, thank you for the moment, thank you for this time, and I pray your blessings on all gathered here today. In your son's holy name we pray. Amen. Thank you very much.
(Clerk) Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice at heart.
Thank you, Dr. Parish and Officer Ott. We appreciate that. First on our agenda this morning, as usual, will be our consent agenda. These are cases that the Planning Commission and the zoning staff have fully investigated and for which there are no known pertinent issues that are unresolved. The zoning administrator, Mr. John Peterson, will read these cases into the record. This is John, holding his hand up over here to my left. And he'll ask if there's anyone here, anyone present that's in opposition or wishes to speak to that particular consent agenda case. If there is, we may elect to pull the case from the consent agenda and add it to our regular agenda, in which case it would be heard in its numerical sequence. Next, we will hear cases that were either held or continued from a previous meeting. And lastly, we will hear all the regular cases again in their numerical sequence. Applicants will be asked to come forward and identify themselves, be sworn in for each case. Then the opposition will be asked to do the same and be counted for the record, be sworn in before they give their testimony. When a case number is called, again by Mr. Peterson, all those wishing to address the board will need to come forward to be sworn in by our officer of the day, Mr. Jason Campbell. Jason, raise your hand. Jason's on the front row, so when it's appropriate, come forward, and he'll take care of that. He'll also ask you to sign his register, that's so that we can get the correct spelling of your name, and we'll appreciate that. Please be aware that each side, pro and con, gets 10 minutes collectively. That's not 10 minutes per person. So if you stand up and speak for nine minutes, anybody behind you in line may just get one. We try to enforce that rule whenever we can. We try diligently to do that. So that's 10 minutes collectively, be mindful of that. And remember, when you're speaking to us, there is no rebuttal process at that time. That's not your time to question us, that's your time to make your case. So that's the way our procedure goes. We may invite you to come up later to clarify a point or to answer a specific question, but that's how we like to operate. Mr. Peterson, any other instructions for us this morning?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There is one case on today's agenda in which the applicant is asking for it to be withdrawn without prejudice. It's rezoning case Z-40 M. Sala Yudin. The applicant has requested this be withdrawn without prejudice, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. We need a motion for that, I assume?
Yes.
Yes, we do. So we have a motion to withdraw Z-40. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to withdraw Z-40. Any comments? Let's call for the vote. So that will be withdrawn. If you're here -- yeah, we got it. All votes are registered. So Z-40 is withdrawn, will not be heard today. What else, John?
Yes, sir. There are two cases on today's printed agenda which have been continued or held that will not be heard today. First case is rezoning case Z-12 of 2017, SSP Blue Ridge LLC. That case has been continued by the staff until the October 3rd, 2017 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-12 of 2017 will not be heard today. Rezoning case Z-27 of 2017, Ameritech LLC. That case was continued until the September 7th, 2017 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z-27 of 2017 will not be heard today. Dear the Board, Mr. Chairman, Board, there is one case on today's printed agenda which the applicant is asking for it to be continued. It's rezoning case Z-44, Meritage Homes of Georgia LLC. The applicant has asked this case to be continued, Mr. Chairman, so they can continue working on the site plan.
Okay, Gault, that's yours. Do you have any comments on Z-44?
Yeah. I guess the letter requesting the continuance must have come in just slightly late to make the printed agenda, but it is one that we have talked about. I think it's good to continue for a number of factors. One is, the site plan needs to change so that we, you know, improve the traffic flow a little bit more, get rid of the access on Hicks Road at the traffic light, which was going to really degrade that intersection if they did come onto that. So there's a lot of work to be done after some of the community meetings that were held on it. So I support that, and I'll make a motion to continue Z-44 until our September hearing.
Second.
Here, a motion, a second, to continue Z-44. Let's go ahead and register our vote for that. So if you were here today for Z-44, that is going to be continued to September, Gault, is that right? To the September cycle, so we'll not hear that case today. Okay, John?
I would like to ask people in today's audience, if you have a cell phone, please turn the volume off. The ringing does interfere with the broadcast and presentations. So if you have a cell phone, please turn the volume off. Any person wishing to speak before the Board of Commissioners must file a campaign contribution disclosure statement. If within the last two years immediately preceding the filing of a rezoning application, a campaign contribution totaling $250 more was made to a current member of the Board of Commissioners. Additional information about this is located on the table at the back of the room. I want to remind applicants, opposition, and any interested party that information is due to the Planning Commission the Wednesday prior to the hearing. Any information submitted after Wednesday may or may not be considered by the Board at their discretion. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I would like to start the consent agenda.
Thank you, John. Let me just reiterate. We often get last-minute emails, everything from stipulation letters to special requests that come in after the Wednesday deadline. It's really important that you get those in to the zoning staff so they can then get it to us, if we're going to consider it at all. There's always a last-minute flurry, so let me remind you, please don't do that. Get it to us quickly so that we can consider it. We'd like to have all the evidence. Okay, John, go ahead, please, sir.
Mr. Chairman, there is one request for an early head count. Can I get a show of people here who are opposed to rezoning case Z-45 Trayton Homes LLC? Please raise your hands.
If you're here for that one and you are opposed, keep your hands up until we can get an accurate count, if you don't mind, please. Yeah. John, we don't have any overflow in the hallway, I gather? Everyone inside?
That's correct.
Be sure we get the count. I think everyone's in here.
Trayton Homes. Okay. Can I get a show of people here who are in support of rezoning case Z-45 Trayton Homes?
Other than the attorney. I got you. Okay, thank you very much.
All right.
Let me just, based on that, let me just say that I know a lot of you made special efforts to get here, some probably had to get daycare and that sort of thing, get off from work. I'm going to recommend we move Z-45 unless I hear otherwise from these folks up here. We move it to the front of the agenda so we can hear that early, so if you need to leave, that'll be just fine. If you do leave, I'd ask you to do so quietly, because we will move on to the next case pretty quickly after Z-45. And I'd like to recommend we move that to the front of the agenda. Is that okay with Skip? Okay? John, we can do that then.
Okay, we do that right after consent.
We can do it right after consent. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. Cobb County Planning Commission zoning hearing consent agenda for August 1st, 2017. Rezoning case Z-41, JOM Holdings LLC, request rezoning from PSC to CRC for the purpose of a specialized contractor's office in Landlot 1029 of the 16th District. The property is located on the west side of La Croix Drive, north of Robinson Road. Staff recommends approval to the CRC zoning district, subject to the following conditions: Site plan received by the zoning division on June 1st, 2017, with the district commissioner approved reminder modifications; office for specialized contractor only; no outdoor storage or outdoor display of merchandise; district commissioner to approve all signage; water and sewer division comments and recommendations; fire department comments and recommendations; store manager management division comments and recommendations; and department of transportation comments and recommendations. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-41? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Rezoning case Z-42.
Mr. Chairman, I have questions with the stipulation letter on Z-41, and also not all the issues that were discussed by the East Cobb Civic Association are addressed in the stipulation letter.
Okay, we will handle that. Yeah, we'll read all of the consent agenda items, and then I'll come back, and we're going to address that.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're fine.
Okay.
We appreciate that. Okay, John, please go ahead.
Thank you. Rezoning case Z-42, TNA T. Ayers and Veronica N. Ayers, request a rezoning from ONI to R20 for the purpose of a single-family house in Landlot 703 of the 19th District. Property is located on the west side of Hicks Road, south of Old Milford Church Road. Staff recommends approval to the R20 zoning district, subject to development for one single-family residence within setbacks required by the R20 zoning district. Fire department comments and recommendations; water and sewer division comments and recommendations; store manager management division comments and recommendations; and the department of transportation comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-42? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Moving into land use permits on the consent agenda. LUP 12, Brian C. Young, request a land use permit renewal for the purpose of creating crafts to be sold at other locations not in home in Landlot 225 of the 20th District. The property is located on the north side of Middleton Place, northeast of Drayton Hall Drive. Staff recommends approval for 24 months, subject to the following conditions: Any code enforcement complaints that the applicant has been found guilty of will result in the automatic revocation of this land use permit; no employees, no customers or clients coming to the house, no deliveries or signs; water and sewer division comments and recommendations; fire department comments and recommendations; store manager management division comments and recommendations; and department of transportation comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP 12? Let the record show there's no one opposed. LUP 15, Philip I. Vester, request a land use permit for the purpose of a construction hardship, which is the use of an RV during fire damage repairs in Landlots 191 and 242 of the 17th District. The property is located on the southeast side of Concord Road, northeast of the east-west connector. Staff recommends approval for 12 months, subject to the following conditions: Land use permit to expire upon the issuances of a letter of completion, or 12 months, whichever happens first; fire department comments and recommendations; water and sewer division comments and recommendations; store manager management division comments and recommendations; and department of transportation comments and recommendations. Is the applicant here for LUP 15? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP 15? Let the record show there's no one opposed, and that, please, consent agenda, Mr. Chairman, Board.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Peterson. Now, let's go back to Z-41, if we could, just a moment. Some folks from ECCA, East Cobb Civic Association, did send us a letter requesting that some additions, some additions to the stipulation letter. I've reviewed that, I've talked to them, I've also talked to Mr. Sams and Mr. Rosen from the applicant's attorney, and I do agree that much of that does need to be added. So I like Z-41 for the consent agenda, but I'm going to recommend deletion to NRC, which is a little bit tighter, doesn't have quite as many uses that are allowed. And, John, could we do NRC for this use only?
Correct, you could.
Okay, why don't we do that then, just to tighten it up even a little bit more? So NRC, this use only, and then on stipulation number eight in the stiff letter, which lists the, what the applicant has agreed to limit what can be kept on the site, I want to add the following to the end of that sentence, just have instead of a period, have a comma and say, "including flammable liquids, all, any chemicals, or construction materials, construction equipment, construction dumpsters, all of this is not allowed on the site, plus no deliveries except the usual UPS, FedEx, and mail." And then add a new one, number 11, which will read, "If exterior lighting is added to the building or to the site, it must be environmentally sensitive with no light being allowed to protrude beyond the property boundaries." The rest of their request, I think, were covered in the stiff letter, so with those two additions, it should be fine to remain on the consent agenda. So that would be my recommendation. Thea, do you have anything else?
Right. On, in the stiff letter, usually there are five items under minor modifications, and one of those items has been deleted from this particular application. That one being increase the density of a residential project, which this does not fall into, or the overall square footage of a non-residential project. So I don't know if Mr. Huff is here for...
Yeah, Adam. Adam, come on up just a second, please.
Good morning, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Adam Rosen, here on behalf of the applicant this morning, is Z-41. That being added to the stipulation letter would be agreeable to the applicant if requested?
You would agree to add that stipulation?
That's correct.
I think that's just an oversight, and I'm glad Thea caught that, because I didn't catch that either. So we'll add that also to the end of the stiff letter, to that, to number five, to the...
That's agreeable.
Possible additions there.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Anybody else? We have a motion, we have some amendments to...
No amendments.
We don't have a motion, but I'll make a motion. Make a motion to leave this on the consent agenda with the changes and corrections and additions that we stipulated here. I'm sorry? We've taken care of Z-40.
I have one addition to Z-42.
Okay.
That is for the district commissioner to approve final allegations. That's all on that one.
Okay, so we have an addition to Z-42, we have an addition to Z-41. These are just really corrections. Anything else? Anybody? Okay, so I'll make a motion then that we do approve the consent agenda as presented and as corrected. Can I get a second?
Second.
We'll go with Judy, second. Let's go ahead and register our vote. So consent agenda is fine. Thank you, John, go ahead, please.
Thank you. Okay, moving into the regular agenda, rezoning case Z-45 Trayton Homes LLC, request rezoning from R30 and R20 to RSL, non-supported, for the purpose of non-supported residential senior living, in Landlots 292 and 293 of the 20th District. Property is located at the southwest intersection of Burnt Hickory Road and Bob Cox Road. The applicant is present. Earlier, there were 51 people here opposed to this application. All those wishing to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Let's remember the 10-minute rule now, okay? 10 minutes per side, please. While they're coming forward, I should have, and I failed to do that, I like to read into the record what the votes were. The vote on the last consent agenda was 5-0 for approval as amended, so get that on the record as well. No. Okay, y'all take your seat, and we'll call you up as soon as we have heard the presentation.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, when you're ready.
Thank you, and hope y'all are doing well this morning. For the record, I'm Kevin Moore. I'm here on behalf of the applicant Trayton Homes and the property owners, the Kirk family, in this application for rezoning. This property is located at the intersection of Burnt Hickory and Bob Cox Road in West Cobb County. The property is 16.2 acres, almost 16.3 acres, and we're proposing rezoning this property from its existing R20 and R30 categories to the residential senior living, RSL category, for a residential senior living community by Trayton Homes of a maximum of 46 homes. First, I just want to take the opportunity to review kind of the surrounding area. Those who are here in opposition are presumably from the area, and they're aware of it, but I think it's also good to make sure that you're aware of the surrounding area in particular. For that, we can use the screen a little bit, and you can see this is in West Cobb, primarily on Burnt Hickory Road. Like a lot of areas in West Cobb, it's dominated by two categories, R20 and R30, usually the R30 are one-off lots that either have been a home for a very long time, or new homes that were one-off and built on a lot, or R20 subdivisions. And there's subdivisions after subdivisions that are R20, and every once in a while, you do find R15. It's very rare, but one of those R15s is interior to this intersection of Bob Cox and Burnt Hickory Road, and it's to the rear of this property, and it's an R15 subdivision of West, called West Carrington. What that does from an area standpoint is it provides, if it's single-family residential density, is it's low-density residential. It is anywhere from 1 to 2 and 1/2 units per acre, and really tops out with West Carrington at about just over 2.1 units per acre. That's West Cobb, single-family residential neighborhoods in this particular area. Now, what also is important to note is burnt hickory. Burnt hickory might be a surprise to many, is an arterial roadway, as classified by Cobb County Department of Transportation. And I'm going to say that again. Burnt hickory is classified as an arterial roadway by Cobb County Department of Transportation. There's a reason. It carries a lot of traffic. Carries a lot of cars, that's why it's an arterial. Number one. Number two, it carries a lot of cars going from one place to another. It's a major road in West Cobb County. It's a major artery. It's an arterial road in Cobb County that carries traffic. And the reason why we have made this application, and why Trayton Homes has made this application, is because burnt hickory is an arterial, and under the RSL ordinance, RSLs are appropriate, qualified for location on an arterial roadway. And that's what we have here, an arterial roadway which predominates the frontage of this property. This is a roadway which carries traffic. It's an intersection with Bob Cox Road, and a further intersection with Gordon Combs Road that carries traffic. And you're going to hear that over and over again, because I've heard it over and over again, when we've met with folks, and we've heard from folks, and we've seen the comments from folks. And there is a traffic issue, but this is not the one place in Cobb County that there's a traffic issue. We have traffic issues all over Cobb County, and through proper development and quality development, proper growth, and planned growth, traffic can be addressed as best as it can. Now, I want to turn to the site plan specifically and show you why we believe this is an excellent location for a residential senior living community that would be age-restricted and detached. Turning to the site plan itself, again, we're going to show this is the 16 acres here. At the top is Burnt Hickory, and Bob Cox Road here on the right-hand side, here's the intersection. What we have proposed is a total of 46 age-restricted homes, detached homes. We'll have a single access point, boulevard access point here at Bob Cox Road, with no access along Burnt Hickory Road. The further thing that we've done, and we're able to do, is we've provided for an increased setback from Burnt Hickory Road of a maximum, or minimum, of 40 feet, which will allow that area along Burnt Hickory Road to remain natural and undisturbed. If you've driven this section, actually, the tree line comes right up to the pavement, so actually extends into the right-of-way a good bit, and so that this could really remain as natural and disturbed along Burnt Hickory Road to the greatest extent possible. We think that's also an advantage for this type of project, in that you can do those types of buffers, and you can do those types of site planning. In addition, some of the features of this particular site plan is we've placed the community-proposed amenity area consisting of a community pavilion, gardens, even proposed something as common lawns and bocce ball courts, something that could be very, and that is directed, aimed, and targeted at the intended market here, which is age 55-years and older who have made this lifestyle choice. That would be placed at the corner, again, taking away from a visual impact. You have low impact visually at the intersection of residential property and of these two roads. Again, that's intended to be there to, again, lessen any visual impact from having the homes. In addition, you have throughout the community, common pocket parks in areas that are placed intentionally to provide that green field as you drive through, and for the community residents. And in addition, you have a large area to the southwest corner here that is set aside as a passive park. There is a, some small amount of flood plain that's located here, and there's also a stream that kind of cuts through the corner here, which provides for a nice area to go ahead and set this large section aside as a dedicated passive park, again, that would have the walking trails and provide connectivity enjoyed by the residents throughout. We think this is an excellent example of how this can be laid out and how it can be designed to be marketed for its intended homeowner, and that is an age-restricted owner, 55-years and older. Also, I want to turn to the, actually, streetscape of what is being proposed by Trayton Homes. Who's going to turn to that? In this instance, you can see that we've specifically designed with Caldwell Klein, a local architect and design firm that is excellent in their designs, to design specifically the types and look of the homes and the streetscape that will be part of this proposed residential senior living and age-restricted community. As you can see, it's specifically designed for that. These are homes that have master bedrooms on the main floor in accordance with the age-restricted code sections in the RSL ordinance, and that's important. This is designed specifically for that market. It's designed specifically from a home building standpoint to meet all of those requirements, as well as from a livability standpoint, because, again, this is a market, a targeted age-restricted community that is booming. The demand is there, the market is there, and that's what is happening here. Trayton is simply responding to that market demand that is for age-restricted communities as more and more people choose to make that decision to move and move down, move smaller, not have the worry of the yards, not have the worry of maintaining a large home, but instead of maintaining a home and living in a home that's specifically designed for their needs as they grow older, and also places them in living in a community that is designed specifically from the amenities to the landscaping to the streetscape to their wants and needs. We've been told that Trayton Homes is making a density grab here, and I take great offense to that. Trayton Homes has been here in Cobb County, building in Marietta and Cobb County, and specifically in West Cobb since 1970. They're one of the most responsible, best builders and developers that we have, and have made that reputation, and have earned that reputation. This is not a density grab. This is well-thought-out in terms of trying to meet a market demand that is out there. More and more people make this lifestyle choice. This is simply... This is simply responding to that market demand. Zoning and planting, zoning and land use, we can get repetitive. If what we want is the same thing, one subdivision after another, one subdivision after the other, I can tell you what you get. You get subdivisions dumping out on the Burnt Hickory Road, an arterial road, and further clogging those streets with morning traffic, afternoon traffic during the peak times. I can tell you what we can get. We get the same-looking thing, and that's fine. There's some beautiful subdivisions in West Cobb, there's some beautiful subdivisions in East Cobb, North Cobb, and South Cobb, but we can get that over and over again. What also land use and zoning can do is they'll provide for quality housing options that look and feel the same as that surrounding area. Where we are is proposing with 46 homes, a few less homes were within 2.5 units per acre, which is low-density residential, which is what staff has recommended. That's compatibility. May look a little bit different, but it's still compatibility. It's still low-density residential, and it's done responsibly, and it's done with an eye towards meeting a market, not simply repeating what is there. What we do know for fact about residential senior living and age-restricted communities is they do impact traffic in a positive fashion, as compared to developing this property as a single-family neighborhood. There is no question, there is no doubt, that is not an opinion, that's a fact. If you want to affect traffic positively in this area, then age-restricted community is the right thing to do here, not simply the same old subdivision. And with that, we appreciate your consideration of this zoning application in respect for the request. You follow your staff's recommendation and recommend approval of this in the application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Isn't that ironic? He did it in 10 minutes. He doesn't normally do that in 13 seconds, so you did well. Let's hear from the opposition now.
Good morning. Thank you so much for your time.
Give us your name, if you will, please.
My name is Mary Ross, and I live on Gordon Combs Road. I'm the president of the Homeowners Association for Oak Grove, and I'm also an accredited fair housing trainer for the National Affordable Housing Management Association, and I've been asked to talk just a little bit about the fair housing requirements and fair housing enforcement. Number one, the property doesn't have to be rezoned in order to be a senior properties. Senior properties are really managed under the covenants in this particular case of a neighborhood, so R20 could still be senior living without having to re-designate. When we talked to Trayton, and I actually had a meeting with Trayton with some of the other members of our board, when we talked to Trayton, we were a little bit concerned about enforcement of the fair housing law, and the indication was that Cobb County would ensure enforcement that the subdivisions, all senior subdivisions, as a matter of fact, were complying with the fair housing requirement, which is that at least 80% of the homes are occupied by somebody who's 55 and older. And this is done, number one, when 25% of the homes are sold, the monitoring starts, and then it's supposed to be surveyed every two years. So based on that information, we did some research, and it doesn't seem to be that there's any oversight in Cobb County about whether or not somebody is actually complying with the senior designations in these communities. We can't find anything where there's a process, or where covenants are submitted and approved, so we're a little concerned with, a little concerned about, not just the fact that seniors need housing, but that we are complying with the rules surrounding fair housing law. So we just wanted to bring that to your attention, and in deference to all the people that want to speak, I'll stop with that, but certainly am available if you have any additional questions.
Thank you, Ms. Ross. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. For the record, my name is Helen Gorham, and I live about a mile west of this proposed rezoning and travel it every day numerous times, and I have to make comment that if we start making zoning decisions solely based on traffic, then I would imagine you're gonna put some RSLs on Paper Mill Road, because we can look at a lot of areas out there that have a lot of traffic, and if the character of the existing sub-area does not play into your decision, and it's only traffic, well, then everyone's in for a world of change here. Think about it. If there's a lot of traffic on Paper Mill, are we gonna be allowing for cluster homes to be placed on Paper Mill? But the existing character of Burnt Hickory is semi-rural. Everything that's developed there is semi-rural. Both roads have no curbs and gutter, no sidewalk, and around it is low-density to density, very low-density categories. But I want to talk about the proposed product, which is an expensive, craftsman-style cluster home, let's call it what it is, cluster home, priced from $400,000 to $500,000. Approval of this rezoning would continue to take the county further and further away from the original intent of RSL, which is an affordable, walkable, convenient, and adaptable senior housing product. There is no doubt that this expensive cluster homes will financially benefit the landowner and developer. Seniors downsizing from ultra-expensive homes, most likely from outside of Cobb County, who want to take advantage of Cobb's senior tax exemption, will benefit also. But who will be serving Cobb seniors? Those who have lived in Cobb for some 25 to 30 years and need a less expensive housing product than a cluster home. Please recommend denial. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Jeremy McCowen, and I purchased a home here in Cobb County four years ago. The reason I did, the primary driving factor, is while I was watching a home here, my wife had two strokes, and she was treated at Kennis Town Hospital. We received such excellent care, and the TPA and everything that was done in rapid movement gave me faith in that hospital, and we moved here afterwards so that she could be with her neurologist and whatnot. What we found is that in the last two years, we have a hard time getting a bed if she has any problems at the hospital. The director of nursing over there told me that their hospital was at capacity through the entire slow season, and that they're trying to expand the hospital now. When we went back this year, they had the same problem. I'm recommending denial of this because the age group that would fit into the RSLs that are being built, numerous of them in the area, are gonna put undue stress on the already restricted medical treatment that we have here in both our hospitals and our current doctors. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name's Owen Adair. I'm a resident nearby of the first community.
Give us your name again. Give us your name again.
Owen Adair.
Owen, thank you very much.
I'd like to ask, what is the benefit of the rezoning modification to the surrounding community? Because that's the community that's affected. I don't oppose development. Since a senior living community of 24 homes could be built under the current zoning, I do not see the benefit of this proposed rezoning. I'm asking commissioners to consider both who benefits from this change and the voters' desire for the community to remain at the current density level. Thank you.
Thank you, Owen. Next speaker, please.
My name is Dennis Cook, and this is my wife, Susan. We reside in West Carrington subdivision, and we are adjacent neighbors to this proposed development. I speak on behalf of the residents of West Carrington affected by stormwater runoff and flooding as the result of past development, primarily from adjoining Burnt Hickory Point subdivision. That development was also a site of past opposition and included illegal dumping and improper control of silt, which led to an EPA-reported fish kill. Creation of Burnt Hickory Point and the county not originally doing its job to effectively mitigate water issues was just the beginning to years of property damage and storm runoff. Properties along this creek in West Carrington are continually affected by excessive water. When our home was built in 94, building codes allowed homes to be built within 25 feet of water sources. Since then, eight large trees on our property, seen in these photos, have fallen due to erosion. Storms produce water depths of 4 to 6 feet, and at its worst, 10 feet deep, as shown here. I continued to watch my property disappear, losing 8 feet of creek bank. I have made efforts to stop erosion by placing over 50 sandbags, over 30 tons of granite stone in my creek in efforts to stop erosion. The foundation of my home that was once 26 feet away is now 18 feet away. The footings for my deck are now 4 feet away from collapse. My deck, per code, is attached to my house, so it's just a matter of time. Now Trayton Homes wants to add to the destruction by maximizing their profits and asking for rezoning to allow for almost twice as many homes than what the property is currently zoned. After walking my property with David Breeden, it was his opinion that extra measures be taken based on what he saw, such as the inclusion of a detention pond. But water is still water, and no matter how much you try to control it by allowing for Trayton to rezon and maximize its profits by increasing density, you will allow them to create more water velocity and volume on property to the south. Mr. Breeden indicated that if this were a commercial development, I could witness catastrophic consequences. We're tired of the excess water and the cost we've endured to save our property, and strongly oppose this rezoning. There is no reason to rezon this property and to add to stormwater issues by adding more impervious surface in this community. It is our hope that the county will for once consider the safety and well-being of its citizens, their property, and the environment itself.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. and Ms. Cook. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is John Sanderson. There's two things I'd like to present. One is a petition against this rezoning. We have 458 signatures on it. Probably within the next couple of weeks, we hope to have another 500 signatures. Is there somebody I should present this to? And the last thing is, the best example of a proper location for this type of zoning in this area is a development near the public shopping center on Barrett Parkway at Dallas Highway, which is not close to even being sold out right now. There's plenty of property on major roads for such developments. The difference here, of course, is that the price of the land is much cheaper where the proposal is going now in a purely residential district. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Next speaker, please.
Hi. My name is Phil Jarvey. I live in West Carrington, and actually, I live in the cul-de-sac that backs up to this property. My concern is traffic. We've got a lot of fancy names for Burnt Hickory. Basically, it's a racetrack during rush hour. It's very unsafe. And in the original notice that I got, they showed their entrance, their basic entrance on Burnt Hickory. Now, all of a sudden, we see a plan that's changed it to Bob Cox. My suggestion, I don't have a problem with the builder, has good reputation, and I don't have a problem with age 55. I wish I was 55 once again.
Excuse me. Time has run.
But I do have a problem with traffic, and my suggestion is, we could have a win-win with this if they move their entrance to be across the street from Gordon Combs. Pay for a light. The cost of the light could be rolled into the price of their individual properties. This would be a safety factor. This would slow down that traffic. It would also, Bob Cox has become a shortcut to Paulding County. We need to slow traffic down. Someone's mentioned that because they're 55 or older, they're not gonna be paying a school tax. Here's another win-win. That light would protect our school buses. That's my opposition. Traffic. We have to deal with traffic before we talk any further.
Thank you, Phil. You guys are doing good. Why don't you come on up, and let's see if we can get in a couple more real quick? Let's be sure we have something we haven't heard before.
Thank you. My name is Teresa Bender, and I also back up to the proposed lot. I live in West Carrington, just in the same subdivision, and I am opposed that the zoning of this area be changing so that we keep it to be what it was when I bought that land. I'm opposed also to the traffic constraints, whether you put a light in at Gordon Combs or you make people come in off Bob Cox. It's gonna be a very difficult place to get in and out of, and you can have traffic backed up from Bob Cox all the way down to Barrett Parkway in the morning, which is way too much, and even coming back in the afternoon, it backs up from Kennesaw Mountain, trying to get across Barrett. So I am opposed from a traffic, and I impose it vehemently to rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Let's get another one up here, please, quickly.
Thank you. Commissioners, my name is Buck Reese. I've lived at 2671 Old Hickory Drive, which is in a different area from what we've heard from previously West Carrington folks. I live right across the street from the development on Old Hickory, and have lived there for almost 40 years. This would be a radical departure from the zoning and the development along Burnt Hickory, from west of Polk Street all the way out Burnt Hickory. So this would be a radical departure from that. Traffic is a nightmare. If you take your life into your hands trying to turn left on to Burnt Hickory, anytime in the afternoon and in the morning, traffic backs up from past Bob Cox already. Now, I noticed that the new plan is to put the entrance and access and egress on Bob Cox. Well, that can only be, given there's a house there already, there can only be probably 100 or so feet before that runs into Burnt Hickory. So they're gonna be turning onto Bob Cox, either turning left or right in that time, and in the afternoons, it will be a nightmare trying to get out of that to turn right, and in the mornings. Now, here's an example. When I moved onto Old Hickory 40 years ago, my dog slept in the street, and now we have speed humps, if that tells you anything about the development of this area. Now, in the mornings, people use Old Hickory as a cut-through to gain advantage and a few cars to get through down to Burnt Hickory. So that will only increase with us, the people in that neighborhood. I have runoff on our street from the Bob Cox area. We have silt in my creek on our street already, and more impervious surface will not add to that. I don't know whether there's been a hydrology study done on this land coming down Old Hickory. I jokingly, tongue-in-cheek asked Attorney Moore if they would not develop something like the retreat down closer to the park, where there would be higher-priced homes and less density on that. Make it a gated community, be a very nice addition to the area, and Colby Jones has made a good living off of the thing, and also Jerry Bonner has done well on his. That would be a more favorable development, less homes and less density and less traffic. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Reese. Let's see if we can squeeze in two more as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Hi. Good morning, Board of Commissioners. My name is Elizabeth Jones, and I'm here because I live on Burnt Hickory. I live three houses from where this entrance on Burnt Hickory is going to go, or proposed to go. I'm opposed to it because unless you live on Burnt Hickory, you don't wake up every morning and see a line of cars that go from 1 and 1/2 miles from the stoplight to our house. I cannot get out of my driveway on a good day. That's a problem. At night, it is the autobahn. There are people running on Burnt Hickory, and I mean running and racing on Burnt Hickory. The speed limit is 40 miles an hour. Every single night, I go 40 miles an hour. By the way, I am 64. I am not opposed to a 55 and older facility. What I'm opposed to is the infrastructure problems that we have that we're not solving. So my ask is, solve the problems. At night, it's an autobahn. There are cars going 50, 55, 60 on Burnt Hickory. It's 40 miles an hour. It is not safe. Go to the next slide. This is our house, or our road. Right where those trashcans are, there was an accident, and the poor guy, I went out and met him. He said, "All I was doing was trying to turn, and someone hit me." That's all I was trying to do, everyday life. There are bikes that take this road. There are buses that stop on this road. There are people that walk this road. The proposal is to shrink the width of the road, so there's nothing, you're not shrinking the road, you're shrinking the sides of the road so people will not be able to walk. What about the people riding bikes? What about the traffic? What I'm asking is, again, I'm 64. I have no opposition of a community going up. My opposition is, there is infrastructure problems. My friend talked about medical. If we can't solve the medical problems, what's the purpose of a 55 and above facility? What is the purpose of that facility if we can't solve this traffic problem? So again, I am declining this, or asking for you not to vote for it until you have an adequate plan that solves the traffic problems on Burnt Hickory, and you solve the medical problems that we have, because that's quality of life. So bottom line is, I'm asking you as the commissioners, and you as the people in the audience, listen to the citizens of Cobb County. We are raising our voice, and we're asking to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Let's see if we can get in one more quickly. We're being generous here, folks. I hope you realize that. We're gonna let the applicant come back up and have some additional time, though.
Hey, good morning. My name is Sam Snow. I also live out in the West Cobb area, off of Burnt Hickory. I'll be brief, I promise. Understand we have time constraints. Understand we have time constraints. I'm opposed, I just like, I think most of the people out here. I don't think it makes any sense to add density at all out there. You've heard all the specifics on the issues that we already have. This won't help. I don't want to sound dramatic, but this is not a market to us. This is our neighborhood, our community, and ultimately, it's being destroyed. We moved out there because it was relatively quiet. Burnt Hickory is not Dallas Highway. It's not Barrett Parkway. There's, obviously, things need to be built. People need to live somewhere, including my parents. But I just don't think this makes sense. Somebody had just attested, it's actually dangerous to put that number of houses in that area where, I didn't see where that entrance was proposed, but it's not a good spot. I can tell you that already, it's not a good spot, and if you add 40-something more houses, it's definitely not going to be a good spot. So I just wanted to be heard. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Snow. Okay, now, to be completely fair, let's get Kevin Moore to come back up. We did go over about eight or nine minutes, so we're going to give him a chance, if he chooses to comment on any of the things he's just heard. Kevin, go.
Thank you for the opportunity, and I will not take eight or nine additional minutes. I just wanted to address two items that I think would, that were not mentioned previously. I think the comments and my remarks previously addressed 90% of what was brought forward, traffic. And I addressed that. Without question, RSL has less of an impact on traffic, period. At 46 homes, at 41 homes, at 45 homes of RSL, has significantly less traffic impact than developing this property as an R-20 subdivision, for example, which is what we heard, and that's a fact. But there's two other issues I just want to raise. And number one, the gentleman, Mr. Dennis Cook, who showed you the pictures from his R-15 subdivision home that's adjacent to this property. He does have a stormwater issue. I also spoke with Mr. Dave Brayden, who was kind enough to inform us of that, and we're very aware of that, and we discussed with Cobb County Stormwater that he was going to require, as part of his recommendations, elevated stormwater controls for this development, which we agreed to without problem. That is a serious issue that Mr. Cook has, but it's one that is not caused by Traeton, and it's not caused by this property, but one that can be, in fact, helped by development of this property with elevated stormwater controls, which Cobb County Stormwater Division and Mr. Dave Brayden have recommended, and which we readily agree. We have no problem with that. In addition, one of the comments, well, what does this bring? What does your proposal bring? Well, with RSL, with an age-restricted community, what it does bring is it brings a number of things that a regular subdivision would not. It brings increased buffers along Burnt Hickory. It brings amenities to this particular property that would not otherwise be in place for a subdivision. It brings dedicated green space that would be parts of lots if this was a subdivision. It brings a community of residents to this particular area that will enjoy being in a predominantly low-density residential area, which is where they want to live. This market wants to live there. This market shouldn't be relegated to the rear of a public shopping center and told that's where age-restricted communities have to go, is adjacent to a public shopping center or a Kroger shopping center. That's not what's in our code. That's not what's in our ordinance. I don't believe that's who we are. I believe what we do find, though, is those can thrive adjacent to a shopping center at a certain density level, and those, and these type of communities should also be able to thrive in more residential areas as well to provide, again, that quality housing option for those who want to make this lifestyle choice and of that target market. With that, again, we respectfully request your recommendation for approval to the Board of Commissioners. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Kevin. We're going to go ahead and close the public comment portion of the hearing, and we'll turn it back to this body. This is in District 1. This is Mr. Gunther, so he will lead our discussion here. Skip.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I want to thank everybody who's shown up today, over 50 people. Many of you are people that I've heard from through phone calls or emails. I appreciate the interest that you've shown in this, and your interest serves one fundamental purpose, and that is to help shape what happens with this property. So I think we all are excited that you're weighing in on this. I think when something's out of kilter, the community, in the community, the community tends to rise to the cause, and I think that may be what we're hearing today. I want to go through some of the issue areas that I've heard about and I've learned about over the last couple of months that we've been thinking about this. In fact, I'll just share with you that the moment this property was posted, I started getting emails, even before I even had a book saying that it was going to be a candidate, that there was an application for rezoning. So I knew that this would be a potentially contentious case, and I think that's where it's turned out to be. But I think there may be a good resolution. First, I want to talk about density. The proposal originally was for more than 46 lots, 56, I believe. It's now at 46. That's a 2.9 units per acre density. Staff, in their analysis, recommended no more than 2.5, as we've heard from Kevin Moore, using the principle that this is in what's called the low-density residential LDR, future land use map category, which has a cap of 2.5 units. And so that's why they came in at 2.5 units. But when you look at per acre, but when you look at the density of the surrounding subdivisions, you see densities ranging all the way from just right around 1 unit per acre, 1.2 units per acre, up to, in the book, in the analysis book, it said 2.19 units per acre for West Carrington. But that's really a little misleading, because that's not the whole story. That's for Phase 2 of West Carrington. If you look at the entire West Carrington subdivision, it's less than 2. It's more like about 1.9 something. Point is, the density that's being proposed is out of character, just from a density point of view with the surrounding neighborhoods. We heard a lot about traffic and how Burnt Hickory, it's a favorite road of mine, because it's such a beautiful road to drive down, and it is, one lane each way, as we all know, but traffic goes really fast down there. I've got a 16-year-old son who's starting to drive now, and I've told him I really don't want him on Burnt Hickory during the rush hour, because I just, I worry about my 16-year-old son. I'd like to call either Ashley or Amy up just to talk about what we're doing with respect to traffic in that area. So one of you, you're looking at each other. Ashley, why don't you come on up? We'll make this easy. I understand that there is a traffic light study to, you know, to look at the need potentially for a traffic light at the intersection of Gordon Combs and Burnt Hickory, and that study is underway as we speak, and also understand that there are some mitigating actions that DOT Operations is planning to take with respect to Bob Cox Road. Could you describe some of that and what's going on?
Right. Ashley White with the Department of Transportation. We do know that that's a troubled area between Burnt Hickory and Gordon Combs and Bob Cox Road, and we're currently in the process of doing a signal warrant analysis for Burnt Hickory and Gordon Combs. We have to wait until schools start to get traffic counts to get a true reflection of the traffic that's out there. So we should be starting that process soon of taking counts at both Gordon Combs and Bob Cox Road. So hopefully, within the next few months, we'll see if a signal is warranted at that intersection. Now, also, it's been brought to our attention that this may be a good time to try to realign Bob Cox Road with Gordon Combs at that signal if it's warranted. And once we receive those traffic counts from the Signal Department, we're going to look at that and see, you know, the benefit of doing so, and if that could be a potential SPOS project with our next SPOS.
Okay. And then I've, I know that there's been an email exchange where you're talking about maybe putting some different devices up and down Bob Cox Road to help slow down some of the, I mean, that's a beautiful road to drive, and I drive it. It's curvy, and I live in fear sometimes of, you know, what's going to come around the corner as I'm coming near that corner.
Right. We've received complaints about speeding along Bob Cox, and we just did a study earlier this year to see if it warranted the dynamic speed radar signs, and it fell just short at that time. But we're planning to go back out, I believe Traffic Ops told me, in the spring or fall of next year, to get more data and see if those, that signage can be installed at that time.
Okay. And then going back to the traffic light study, how long do you think it'll be before there's a formal recommendation that people such as Traeton, who want to build, will know? Because I can't imagine how they could build anything on that parcel until they know the resolution of the traffic light, because that will determine where they're going to have an entrance/exit for their parcel. So what should we expect?
Well, the Signals Department has a long list to study, but I've made the manager aware that there is a development going in, and hopefully, we can put it on a high priority list to get it studied within the next few months.
Okay. So it'll be a couple of months? Okay.
Right. But traffic count should be taken sometime this month, and then it's a matter of compiling the data and see if it meets the warrants.
Okay. That's, excuse me, I don't have any other questions unless anybody else does.
Ashley, that, the, where they're proposing to Bob Cox, does that meet the distance, or have you seen anything that meets the distance from Burnt Hickory to the turn?
It's very close. Right now, they're showing a right in, right out, though. And usually, you know, if it's within 250 feet of the intersection, we restrict it to right in, right out, anyway. So if it's within that distance, it needs to stay right in, right out.
Right. And it looked pretty close to me when I looked at it, as far as meeting it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I just want to put a little plug in for Bob Weatherford, who's our elected District Commissioner in West Cobb. He has been one of the principal people who's been asking that that traffic light study be expedited. So that's going to help us all if it gets resolved where there might be a traffic light there. A second issue area is, or a third issue area is the, just the general fit. I think Helen Gorham talked about it very eloquently. This is a semi-rural area. There's a farm right down the road that is just beautiful, and part of it's been developed, but it's just, it's a rural area. This is really, it just feels like it's an RSL at the kind of density we're talking about, is out of character with the look and feel of what that road is all about. I think we've heard a lot about, we don't want an RSL here, but offsetting this are the, you know, from the market point, from a market point of view, there's a strong demand for RSLs. They fly off the shelves, quote-unquote, very rapidly as they get sold. They get sold at a rate of several times what a normal subdivision will be built at. But I resonate with the point that we want to make sure that we build our RSLs and don't price ourselves out of being able to downsize. I, for one, am somebody who's looking to potentially downsize someday, and I don't want to spend more than what my house is worth to get something smaller, necessarily. So I resonate with that. When I hear some of the comments that were made, I just want to address a couple of key ones. I think Jeremy McCallum, if I have your name right, talked about Kennystone Hospital and how it's a capacity, and how we don't need more seniors in the area to further with the belief that they're going to be using the hospital more frequently than others, maybe. We don't need that to further exacerbate the problem. I would just offer that RSLs typically bring in 75, 80, 80% plus of their buyers are people who live in the area already. So just to put your mind at ease, the problem is not going to be quite as bad. It's not saying it's acceptable, but it's not quite as bad with, you know, an RSL is not going to make the problem that much worse. It's not to say I'm for an RSL here, but I'm just saying that it will not necessarily get noticeably worse because of one more RSL. Dennis Cook talked about the stormwater runoff issue that he's got. I know that Dave Brayden has been all over that. He's put all these extra conditions in place if this were to go forward. And so I think that, you know, the stormwater issue, management issue, should be well in hand if it's what, if what Dave Brayden is asking for is implemented, and it certainly would be if this were to move forward. I meant to ask Ashley one additional question. Could you come back up? There was a comment that was made that the road width would be shrunk, reduced, if there's were to be developed, and that's the first I've heard that. Is that true?
The Burnt Hickory road?
Yes, Burnt Hickory, right. Somebody, I think it was Elizabeth Jones, made that comment, and I, that just, it's not something that I would have expected.
No, there shouldn't be any change in the width of Burnt Hickory.
I just want to put that, I just want to put a nail in that coffin. Okay. Well, I think we have a couple of choices today, and what I'd like to do is open it for discussion after I describe what I see as the two choices. One choice is, we can just flat-out recommend denial. Mike Terry, our chairman, said at the beginning of this hearing that our role is to make recommendations to the BOC. The BOC, the Board of Commissioners, makes the decision. So our, one motion we have in front of us is, we could, potentially, is we could recommend denial of this. I've thought long and hard about, we have a history on the Planning Commission of trying to work zoning, rezoning applications so that we can get something that represents a compromise, balanced solution to what the community's asking for and what the developer and the landowner, who, by the way, has a constitutional right to sell their land, you know, to get all these different interested stakeholders, if you will, in some sort of a compromised, balanced solution. So we've tried hard to do that. In the vein, you know, in the spirit of thinking about what are ways that we can get this parcel redesigned, you know, so that it might satisfy, in a balanced way, the concerns that people have, we can think about rezoning. It's a split-zone parcel right now. It's roughly a third R-30 and 2/3 R-20. We could rezone it to R-20 and let it be developed as an R-20 subdivision. If that were the case, the current number of homes that are estimated that could be in there of 24 would go to about 28. So we'd get, we would get four additional homes, but in exchange for that, the county would get the right to add all kinds of, because of hearings like this, all kinds of stipulations into this tip letter that define what that development's going to look like, buffers, where the entrance and exits are, the style and construction of the home, and so on and so forth. So that's one option. Another option is, I know with RSL, we want to have smaller lots. One of the reasons for seniors to downsize is they want to have less to take care of. And so part of that is to have a smaller lot. Well, an open-space community overlay, it's being redesigned right now, and it's about to be rolled out in a new form, but the open-space overlay allows for smaller lots than what the underlying zoning would be. So that's another option. Another option is just simply to say, okay, an RSL might fit right here. We'd like to see the density ratcheted significantly down, maybe into the range of what an R-20 subdivision would be. So there's a range of options there. If we were to feel like some of those options might make sense, and we'd like to ask the developer to go back and consider those, what we would do in this hearing is we would hold it, in this case, for at least a couple of months until that traffic light study gets resolved, so that the developer, Traeton, can figure out what they might want to do with the options available to them, given that they have to do a number of things to reshape their proposal. So we have the two options. We can hold this and ask Traeton to go back to the drawing board, or we can just simply recommend denial. And I'd like to open this to discussion, to the Planning Commission, to hear what you have to say.
Okay. Anybody? Judy, let's start with you.
In looking at this side, and we all realize the traffic problems that we have on, not just these roads, but all the roads. And you go out and you look at a track of land, and sometimes you know that RSL, it might be warranted, especially on Barrett Parkway, and we just did one on Barrett at Villa Rica. So sometimes those areas, you feel like that might be appropriate place for the RSLs. They don't generate as much traffic. They go at different peak times. But when I looked at this track of land, it didn't seem like the appropriate place to put the RSL. It seemed like it would be more in character as a single-family detached. And I think one of the problems we're having is, what we're seeing is the RSLs are coming in, and they do, people get the impression that the density is coming in and they do, people get the impression that the density is higher because they look like a normal home. They're selling for $400,000 and $500,000, which puts it out of my reach. I don't know about other people's reach. But, um, we, we're typically, uh, seeing where there were quadplexes attached and, you know, had a lot of green space, but now we see them where they look like individual homes. And so it's sort of misleading. People are thinking it is a density grabber, that they want to do this just to get more density and have a traditional looking home. So I think, given the area, I don't think this particular RSL fits in this neighborhood.
Thank you, Julia. Let me just weigh in. I, I do think we can all agree that senior housing is really needed in Cobb County. I think it's even needed in this area. I like these detached, single family homes for an RSL. I do think this though is out of character for this neighborhood. The density is far too high and really wouldn't fit in. RSLs are generally less impactful on traffic than say a straight R20 or a straight R30 development. So people who complained about the traffic, I think, uh, our presenter from the applicant was exactly right. It is less impactful than a straight R20 or a straight R30, but I'm not convinced that this applicant will be willing to come back, and he and I have talked about this, would be willing to come back with a straight R20 plan or even an R30 plan. Uh, I think that they're looking for density. Perhaps that's related to the cost of the land. I really don't know. That's not something we ever get into, nor should we. But I really don't know that this is compatible for this site. I like RSLs generally, if they're done right and if the density's right, this one's not it. Thea?
The most outstanding issue, uh, from my perspective is, uh, the traffic and then the studies that DOT is scheduled to, uh, complete since this property does extend all the way to Bob Cox Road. Um, if there are going to be any improvements or a signal warrant, it really, you really can't determine a good usage for that property until those problems have been solved.
I'll just weigh in on this. Uh, I think as most people in West Cobb know, we've had a flurry of RSLs in West Cobb. And, you know, something that zoning always needs to do is look at a balance, you know, so that we're not going one way too far and one way the other. I think we're kind of at a tipping point on RSLs where we really need to look at, is it the right location for an RSL? Because we've put so many in, we need to look harder at that. We've always looked at it, but we need to look harder. And, you know, for my time living up in this area, I used to drive Burnt Hickory all the time, going to the Y, uh, and that. And I know the traffic issues. I think, I really think a RSL at this density would probably generate more traffic than, than, than as a property zone, just developing a, a subdivision. And I think part of that is when we look at the RSL numbers in the manuals, that includes all kinds of RSLs, I think. I don't think it really breaks it down to, this is a single family style RSL versus this is a big complex like my mother lives in, which is essentially like a big apartment complex that has meal service and all those kinds of things. And, and honestly, maybe one in 10 people even own a car in that complex. Uh, you know, and they don't generate much traffic. They have community buses that take people around, so, so if you're lumping all of that in with, you know, a, a more traditional style where people literally have to drive to, to go to the grocery store or do something, I think we're going to find that traffic's higher than what the manual is putting out. It's still not going to be as high per household as a normal, single family residence, but that's kind of my look at it. So I tend to agree that, that this isn't an ideal site for an RSL and that, you know, some of it, some of these, uh, traffic studies and, and intersection realignments and, and all of those things leave a lot, a lot of questions in the air as to how, you know, traffic's going to be handled down this road, but right now I don't think it's a good fit.
Anyone else? Okay, Skip, back to you.
Uh, okay, thank you. I'm, I'm ready to make a motion. Um, I'm going to make a motion that, uh, we recommend denial of this application without prejudice so that the applicant can come back sooner than a year from now. Uh, so I'm making a recommend, recommendation, we, uh, deny this without prejudice.
I'll second the motion. I'm not really sure about that, without prejudice, so are you meaning come back with something like an R20 development?
With some, with some proposal, yeah, yeah.
That, that was mentioned to the applicant, a straight R20 might be it. And again, we'd have to look at that very carefully, but that would give them time.
Or, or an R20, open space community.
That's right.
But that gives them six months, John?
That gives them six months.
Six months, okay.
That's right.
Okay.
Okay, so any other comments?
But not come back for an RSL, come back for...
I'm, I'm not looking for an RSL, no.
You're talking about something?
Just to come back with some kind of proposal to deal with this property.
We know this is going to develop.
And maybe they can do that without saying without prejudice, I'm not sure.
Yeah, this will develop at some point.
Maybe I don't have to say that. Let me ask Debbie, do I need to say without prejudice? Can I just say, I do? So that this applicant has the opportunity to come back sooner than a year from now. Yeah, that's what I thought. So my motion is to recommend denial without prejudice.
In my second.
Okay, a second. Any further comments? Okay, call for the vote. Okay, so it is denied. We wish you luck. Maybe you can come back in six months with something that we all like a little bit better. Thank you, folks. Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna move quickly to our next case, so if you do plan to leave, if you do so quickly and quietly, we'd appreciate that very much. Thank you so much. John, let's call the next case, please. Oh, is that the next one?
Yeah, that is. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, quickly and quietly, folks, we'd appreciate it. Mr. Huff, don't leave, you're fixing to be up.
He's trying to get all the people out of here.
Huff, Huff. Thank you very much. Okay, John, go ahead, please.
Yes, sir. Resuming case Z9, Perron Homes, request rezoning from R30 and R20 to R20 O C for the purpose of a residential subdivision in landlots 378, 379, and 380 of the 19th District. The property is located on the east and west sides of Corner Road, south of Wright Road. The applicant's representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed to resuming case Z9? Please raise your hands. That record shows no one opposed.
My presentation might change a little bit. Good afternoon, good morning. It's not afternoon yet. It felt like after that last case, it might be already afternoon. Uh, my name is Parks Huff, the law firm of Sams Larkin, Huffin Valley, and I represent Perron Homes in regards to this rezoning application. When you saw me step back, I was, uh, talking to the property owner who's owned this property and been on this property for her whole life and, and for generations. Uh, she is a proud graduate of McKeachran High School, graduated with my father. I have to give that shout out. Uh, and she is, uh, here in that other case and the changes in, in Cobb County, uh, she's been here a, a long time and she could tell you a lot more changes that have happened. But, um, this case has been around for a while and we had a full presentation before, uh, and I, I did not expect anyone to be here in opposition because we've been in communication with the surrounding community and they understand what we're proposing is consistent with what's around there. Uh, and so I'm going to go through just a quick, uh, presentation with, um, the site plan and, and Perron Homes is proposing, um, a community on Corner Road, both on the east side and west side of, of Corner Road. Um, we held the case because we were trying to get into compliance with the staff recommendation to get the property to 1.5 units per acre. Uh, and so we originally had 54 lots on, uh, the east side and 22 lots on the west side, and we've reduced that down to 17 lots and 48 lots. Uh, we've also added some additional property, uh, so now we are at the 1.5 units per acre. Your staff has revised their recommendation and now recommends approval, uh, at the site plan that we've presented. Uh, and so that gives you an idea of the property, uh, and the surrounding area, that's the, uh, west side of the property with the 17 homes. Uh, you can see the subdivision to the north is Moore's Overlook, um, which is, uh, was sold by, uh, the property owner's brother, because they've owned, the Moore's family have owned this property for a very long, for generations. And, uh, it was developed at 1.7, 7.5 units per acre. Uh, and the staff did have some concerns and questions about that because it is an OSC and some of their lot sizes look bigger, but we, you have to realize is, is that that is only 20% green space, not 35% green space, uh, and their buffers are inside their lot. So if you pull the lot, the buffers outside the lots, what was a 14,000 square foot lot now becomes a 10,000 square foot lot. Uh, we have, uh, as you can see adjacent to that, we now have our buffers outside of our lots. Uh, and so, uh, yes, there are lot sizes are a little smaller, but comparatively we are actually much, much less dense, uh, and overall, uh, we have more, significantly more green space. Uh, this is the east side of the property, uh, that has, um, you know, the community clustered, uh, with, uh, open space surrounding the, the property. We're at 1.5 units per acre on the, on the east side. And, uh, this gives you an idea of the densities around us, uh, 1.75 just to our north. Uh, and, and it cannot be overstated, uh, just to our north, you can see the large PRD, Land Residential Development, uh, that's Echo Mill. That's two units per acre with 10,000 square foot lots. So I want you to put yourself in, uh, the Moore's position and they've been there their entire life and watched all this happen, and now they're coming in. They need to sell, uh, because they need to be able to downsize into a, a home that is, uh, suitable for their, uh, lifestyle. And, uh, they actually are going to relocate on the property. That's why there's a notch on the eastern portion of a 2.2 acre piece. That's where they're going to build, uh, their new house on, on their property, but they need to sell. And they just want to be treated fairly and, and similarly to what has happened. So Echo Mill, it was the big change in, in West Cobb and, in this area with two units per acre and several, uh, most of it, a whole lot of those lots are 10,000 square feet lot, uh, and significant floodplain throughout. And so they are very consistent, if not a lot lower density. Perron Homes is the builder and Perron Homes is built in this submarket and is very excited about, uh, the submarket and, and they build, uh, single family, traditional, single family homes. You can see this is a project that's a little further south, south of Macklin Road in the McKeachran District, uh, and you can see the quality and the market that they're appealing to is a single family buyer. Uh, I know that you've heard some comments in the past from the school board about comments about this, and the school board's analysis actually says, we're overcrowded, we recommend denial because we're overcrowded. Uh, what they forgot to look at carefully is actually most of this property is zoned in the McKeachran District, which is actually under capacity. Uh, so I will say what I said last time, which is, I actually asked that you add look units to my proposal, because this is where we need to be putting single family homes. Uh, and this is a product that will be very appealing to that buyer and is very important, uh, for this area. And, uh, this is just the staff analysis that went through the, the proposal. Uh, we sat down, um, and worked very hard, uh, with the open space plan to come up with a plan that, that met, met the requirements and, uh, we are in compliance with the land use plan. And you know that it is very rare for a West Cobb case to come before you without a whole host of people here with questions and concerns. And we don't have that today because we've done our job, because, uh, the property is located in such a, a place that this is a, a very appropriate zoning for this area. Um, and I, I think that, um, we ask that you follow the staff recommendation and approve this case, uh, as we presented it today. And, uh, I have four minutes left, but given the fact that this is the second time I made a presentation and that there's no one here in opposition, I will be reserved the rest of my time to answer questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Huff. Uh, just for the record, if there is anyone here in opposition to Z9, okay, not seeing and hearing any, uh, that we will close the public comment portion. Uh, this is also in District 1, so Skip gets to lead our discussion again. Mr. Gunther.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Now I'm on. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I don't really have, well, I guess I do have some questions for you, so, you know, if you hang around for a second, uh, that'd be good, Parks. Um, this, this is a, in contrast to the case we just heard, this is, this is an example of a case that we've been looking at since February, March timeframe. It was originally scheduled to come before us in March. And we've heard it and we've held it and it's been continued and then the bottom line of all that process has been Perron, uh, and, and Parks Huff with his client have heard the comments and they've responded to those comments and we now have a plan that has yielded no opposition. I just want to nail one, one point, um, very hard, and that is, one of the early staff comments, well, there were a couple of early staff comments about the general shape of this. One was that the density be no more than one and a half units per acre. We're very close to that and in a moment, I'm going to make a motion that we recommend approval of this, but by reducing the lot count by one so that we in fact are just slightly below 1.499 units per acre. Second comment that staff made was that we need to see, to, to stay in character with this general area, we need to see the minimum lot size be larger than 10,000 square feet. I think that, um, this applicant has worked very hard to address that, but in the process, what we've uncovered is the point that Parks made a minute ago, that when we look at some of the subdivisions that are around here, in particular Moore's Overlook, which is just immediately contiguous into the north of the western parcel of this development, we see that the rules for how they shape and size their lots are different. They only have 20% open space instead of what we require for an open space, uh, community design is 35%. So there was a variance given on that. Secondly, they have buffers around the edge that are included in the lot sizes. We don't, the county really doesn't like that because it's hard for the county to police those buffers when they're inside a private owner's property. So the, the bottom line is when you look at Moore's Overlook, their density is more like 1.7 plus, and here we're talking about density of 1.5 or less. And so that's, that's the real measure of what we're doing with, with the space in terms of open space, lot sizes and so forth. I'm, I'm ready to make a motion. No more comments, okay?
Oh, I'm sorry.
We'll have some after the motions made, so, yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Um, well, I recommend that we approve, recommend approval of, uh, application Z9, subject to the following, uh, the letter of agreeable stipulations and the site plan submitted to the zoning department on July 21st, 2017. Maximum 64 lots, um, which is a reduction of one lot on the eastern part, part of the parcel. Uh, and to redesign, I just said, subject to the site plan and the letter of stipulations, but that's what they understand and that the site plan would be redesigned slightly to accommodate three changes. One change is the reduction of one lot on the east, in the east parcel. The second is, uh, no lots and stream buffers, and it turns out there are two lots that have a small portion that are in stream buffers, and I think that's easily fixed. And the third is that DOT is asking for left turn lanes, north and south. I know that the applicant who lives in the area, and Parks, you live in the area, and I know you feel pretty strongly otherwise, but you said, I give up and I think that's the right thing to do. And so your news, new design needs to reflect those left turn lines as well. Um, otherwise, my motion would be to include all staff comments and recommendations not otherwise in conflict. And finally, once those changes are made in the site plan, to put this on the BOC consent agenda.
If, if, if I can just, uh, you said July 21st stip letter, there's a July 26th stip letter.
I, I'm sorry, that, that was a typo I meant to fix here. Okay, thank you very much, July 26th. Can we correct that?
Yeah. Okay, we have motion and second for discussion. Actually, you just covered what I was going to talk about, the two lots that, that appear to have the corners of them in the stream buffer. I think we're okay there. to have the corners of them in the stream buffer, I think we're okay there. It's an easy fix. And the decel and the left turn lanes have got to be dealt with. You covered that as well, that, those were my comments. Thea, did you have something else?
Yes, and this happened, oh, Parks, you disappeared.
I tried to escape again.
This happened earlier with respect to the minor modifications. You've only listed four of the five. You've eliminated the one that says reduce the size of an approved buffer, et cetera, et cetera. Why is that not included?
We'll be glad to add that as a condition. It was just an overlook, oversight, so I'll be glad to add that.
Okay.
I would modify my motion to include that change in the.
And then I have.
David, do we need to read that verbiage in so we're sure that that, everyone understands?
It would be best, yes.
Okay, I have it if you want me to read it. It, it's a possible change whenever, we're talking about a minor modification. And it should read, reduce the size or composition of an approved buffer adjacent to a property that is zoned for the same or a more restrictive zoning district. So that one was omitted and should be added. Okay, anything else, Thea?
I have a question of staff that relates to this because we use the term buffer. When you look at the plans, the site plans, I don't see the word buffer used. I see landscape strip, open space strip. Are all of those defined in the code? And is the landscape strip the same as a buffer? John or Ms. Blair?
Commissioner Powell, thanks for bringing that to our attention. I would prefer to call it a buffer and, you know, I think the board needs to define what it is. Is it re-landscaped? Is it undisturbed? Is it supplemented with additional vegetation? So I think we need to define that because there has been problems in the past with, with what it is. If it's a landscape strip, then they could probably go in the airplaner view and grade it if they have to, just replant it. You know, the preference is to leave it fully vegetated as possible.
Well, and, and I think we're, we're seeing a variety of terms on the site plans and we think that we're protecting the buffers. And then if we get into this language issue, I think it's important for it to be defined somewhere.
Okay. Uh, Parks? Yeah, folks, we're trying to become a little more specific than we have been in the past with issues like this. And if we need to make changes to the stip letters to reflect what Thea's talking about, and she's absolutely right, by the way, we need to tighten that up.
The, on the eastern portion, that, that landscape strip, if it, if it said a replanted, an amended buffer, because that, that area is actually largely open right now. So we would need to amend with landscaping in there.
A 20-foot landscape buffer for that part?
Yes.
Okay. How about Thea, outside the road?
I need to know where you're talking about. Where on the plan are we talking about? The plan is no longer up on the board, but we have it in front of us. Where are we talking about exactly?
Well, we're talking about this on the eastern portion and then on the western portion, we're talking about the north edge.
I, I think on the other portion, all that's outside of the lots and that is undisturbed.
It's inside the lots on the western side. Let's talk about the western side first, which is on the board now on the screen.
It's outside the lots.
Oh.
That was one of the changes.
Oh, okay.
That was outside, that's one of them.
I got you.
We, we changed that.
Yeah, what there is, is there, there's a different plan in the book, which is confusing. Okay. So the one that's up on the screen now, if we can revise that to a 20-foot landscape buffer to be replanted on the west side, I think that would work for us.
Okay.
Okay, so on the western, we'll add a stip in that you can word in your next iteration of the stip letter for the BOC, which says, on the western portion, the buffer will be landscaped according to a plan approved by the county harvests.
That's the eastern side. The western side, all our buffers are outside the lots. So we don't need, because that, with the open space ordinance outside the lots, we can't, we don't touch.
Those are undisturbed.
It's undisturbed, okay, that's fine.
On the eastern portion, we do have that strip on the northern side.
I'm sure the clerk's going to need some help with this because this is getting convoluted. We need to be sure we're clear so she can get them in and try.
So we're, we're talking about landscaping on the eastern portion in the buffer area and leaving undisturbed the buffer on the western part of the subdivision.
Yeah, that's, that was my original idea, but I thought we were trying to change that and I was wanting to change it. Okay.
Yeah, the one that's on the board right now, as long as you say the, on the eastern side, the 20-foot landscape strip on lots one through nine will be replanted, we find.
Okay, I'll include that in the motion.
May I just ask a question since we're talking about it? Lots 29 through 24, is there a, a landscape strip or buffer along those? I just can't see it very well.
There's none shown.
Okay, so that's.
Yeah, and that does back up to a floodplain area and there's a reason why there's not one shown there, it's.
Yeah, I, I just couldn't see what that.
Yeah, it's not going to ever be built on back in there. There's just no reason to have an additional buffer.
Okay, so that's my motion.
And this is, in, in my view, particularly important because OSC in the code says, is to be site plan specific. So we have this terminology that we have not defined and that's something that I think needs to be looked at.
That's actually a very good point. So the site plan needs to be reflective of what you're proposing because it is site plan specific.
That's right. And we haven't seen it yet, but it'll be before the BOC.
So you have two, two weeks to get that corrected on the site plan that goes to the BOC and our minutes will be reflective of the changes we talked about here. And the two should coincide. Clerk is going to have fun with this one, we wish you the best, ladies. Okay, anybody else? Okay, we have a motion, we have an amended motion, we have a second, let's call for the vote. That is approved 5-0. Thank you, folks, very much. Good luck, Parks. Folks, do we need a break? Anybody? Okay. Oh, and it is on consent, I'm sorry, this will be on consent for the BOC, for the BOC. And yeah, yeah, we can take a break. Let's take a 10-minute break and we'll, we'll be right back. Yeah, and we will be taking, I'm sorry, we'll be taking a. Turn it back on. We will be taking a lunch break at 12 noon, but we'll come back here in 10 minutes and try to get another case or two in. Okay, let's take a break, thank you. Okay, we're back after a brief break, we'll go ahead and jump right back in. Mr. Peterson, what's our next case, please?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next case is resounding case Z34, Josh Thompson, requesting rezoning from R15 and R20 to RA5 for the purpose of a single family subdivision in landlords 1226 and 1291 of the 19th District. The property is located at the northern terminus of Burris Lane and the northwestern terminus of Milton Place and the northern terminus of Lakeview Drive and at the eastern end of Markley Drive, northeast of Veterans Memorial Highway. The applicant representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning cases Z34? Three. Let the director know we have three people here in opposition. All those wishing to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
If you might want to speak, but you're not quite sure, let's go ahead and get you sworn in, doesn't mean you have to speak. Just get it done, thank you very much. And Mr. Huff's filling in for Mr. Sam's today, so whenever you're ready, Parks.
Good morning, for the record, my name is Parks Huff of the law firm of Sam's, Larkin, Huff and Bally. And I have the pleasure to represent Josh and Larry Thompson this morning in this rezoning application before you. I also want to start at the beginning of my presentation in introducing Dan Dobry, who is here with Croy Engineering and he can answer detailed engineering questions regarding the traffic proposal, or the traffic issues related to this proposal, because I think that might be a question. The property that we're talking about, and I've given you a handout that has some of the details about the project and the location of the property and, and the aerial photograph here shows it. And if we can get the pullet where we actually show the zonings in the area, that'd be great. This is a 46 acre tract. It's an assembly of property on the north side of Veterans Memorial Parkway. As you can see, it's right up against the railroad track. And there's several features about the property that, that are very worth considering about the property. First off, the property is low density residential, however, the western property line, all that property is medium density residential. And certainly I would argue that the land use plan is never supposed to be so specific to lot to lot that, that, you know, one side is this and one side is that. So this is in an area where you expect higher density housing, given also, as you can see from this, that there's some RE5s in the area and there's other zonings. And if you can slide down, I want to show another feature that I think is extremely important to show, and that is the context of Veterans Memorial Parkway in relation to this property. And the significant amount of GC and commercial uses on that highway really relate strongly to this case and that what you've got is a masses, mass amount of retail along the highway that is underutilized and is, in some sense, is not very attractive. And then if you look around, you can also see that this area developed many, many years ago and there's not been a lot of new housing. So what you've got is a situation where you've got a commercial that isn't being supported by the surrounding residential. And I think that does have a negative impact on the surrounding residential because of, of the impact that that view have, you have with the underutilized retail along the highway. So what we are doing is something quite different and that is we're bringing in residential housing to an area that would, can really use additional rooftops to support that commercial that's underutilized, to infuse the area with some new vitality, with new citizens, new residents. And we hope that this is a trigger for other developments in the area that can, can lead to great things in this community. So that, I think, is one of the things that is very important to understand about the property. What we propose is 153 homes on this 46 acres, which is around three units per acre. And it's roughly 50 more homes that could be put on as is presently zoned. And one of the things that, and here, here you've got a picture of the site plan showing the subject property, Burris Lane is on the right-hand side as you, and that comes up from, from Veterans Memorial and it wraps around in the property. And one of the things that is extremely important to understand about this site plan and the proposal is the amenity package that's included in that. And one of the great things that's important within the many packages, having enough rooftops to support a vibrant HOA that can maintain that and create the, the community that is successful. And that is one of the driving factors with the proposal that we have here before you today. We've, during the pendency of the application, we have had the opportunity to have great dialogue with the Mabelton Improvement Coalition. I understand from their dialogue that they do still have some questions and concerns about the proposal, but I think in general, they're very excited about new residential coming to this area. And, and we have tried to work through those, their questions and concerns. And we've submitted a letter of agreeable stipulation dated July 21st, 2017, that details, and I'm not going to go through all the ins and outs of that, that stipulation letter, but it details buffers along the existing residential in the area. It details the type of amenity package that we will have in the, the community. And it details the type of homes that will be built here. You've got pictures in your packet of the homes that will be built in this area. The home styles range from 1,800 square feet to 2,000 and up to 3,500 square feet, two, minimum two-car garage. And so one of the also elements to this that we've heard from a lot of people is they want us to be able to make sure we have a lot of, the opportunity to put ranch homes because it is anticipated a lot of our buyers will be an older buyer. And I don't want to confuse it with a case that was earlier today where there was so much concern about RSL and seniors, but we do think that a lot of our buyers, we won't be an age restricted or even age targeted community, but just because of the area and the opportunity here, we think that it will be some older buyers and we want to be able to offer some ranch plans. That does lead to some of the variances we're asking for in the site plan. We do have five-foot side setbacks. And one of the factors in that is that when you do a ranch home, you have to have more of a square footage on your first level than rather a step intensive two-story home. And so that is one of the factors that drives one of those variances there. I think it is also, and I, it does detail the amenity package, we're going to have Olympic style swimming pool, cabana, clubhouse. And it will, the clubhouse will have restrooms and kitchenettes and wraparound porches for, for meeting. We're going to have a sotted athletic field. So this is not just a small amenity package, this is something that is important when you build a neighborhood that is going to be a backbone for this area. One of the things that we have also talked about is the concern about traffic and concern about the DOT, questions about the, the road improvements along Burris Lane and that the intersection of, of Veterans, as I said, Dan Dobry's here that make, answered more detailed questions, but very unusual in this case in that we have agreed to a $300,000 donation or donation to the county for road improvements that are off-site and that are not related to our site. There's system improvements and so it is very significant and it's, it's not required in our zoning process that we be making that type of contribution. But we think it is the responsible thing to do and we've detailed that in this, in the letter, showing how that, that contribution we made, that money will be allowed, will be available to make improvements to Burris Lane and also to the intersection at Veterans Memorial Parkway. So we think that that is a huge factor in this application. As I said, we have gone through significant dialogue with the community and we think that we have a, a situation where we have the opportunity to bring in some quality single family development into an area that has not had any new significant residential development for a long period of time. I have to also emphasize that who the developer is, and that's Larry Thompson and Josh Thompson. I think most of you know who Larry Thompson is. He is one of the preeminent, if not the preeminent developer in residential developer in Cobb County. He's got vast experiences developing in Cobb County. And quite frankly, he's taking a risk coming down into an area that has not had a lot of residential activity in putting in this development down here. It's a risk that he thinks is, is worth taking. And I think that, that the track record he has as a very successful developer is something that you should very much consider in this rezoning application today. So we ask that you, and I know that the, it might be slightly outside the land use plan, but the positive factors is the fact that this is new residential development, that it supports the overabundance of retail in the area that, that just does not function as it does now. And that this area desperately needs some infusion of some, of some new residents and new activity in the area that, that hopefully can spur other things. I am, I anticipate from the school board representative standing up here that he's going to say that, that the schools are overcrowded and that they are opposed to this. I do want to address it directly and that is, this is the type of community that creates the backbone for a school. You know, in the area where I'm in, West Cobb, it's your communities with an HOA that was, is the backbone for your PTSA. Because those are the involved parents and those are the group of kids that, that, you know, play together and their parents socialize together. And this is the type of community that is needed to support the school system. And there is, you know, not anything like this in the area. And we think that when this comes on board, this will be your PTA leaders and that you cannot overemphasize how that important that is for the, for the schools in those, in this area where school involvement by parents may not match other parts of the county. So I greatly appreciate your time. We ask that you recommend approval of the application with 153 homes, as I said, it's extremely important, that number to, to support the amenity packs that we have there. And I'm here to answer any questions that you have. Josh Thompson's also here, as is Dan Dobry, with specific engineering questions relating to DOT. So thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Huff. We went over just a little bit and that's, that's okay, we did fine. Let's hear from the opposition or if you just wish to make a comment, come on up and give us your name, please. Let's hear from the opposition, or if you just wish to make a comment, come on up and give us your name, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Dennis Campbell. I represent the Cobb County School District. As Mr. Parks already indicated, I am here to tell you of our concerns with overcrowding at a nearby school. This is a significantly dense proposal, and it will impact Mableton Elementary in a significant way. And we are very concerned about that and concerned about all developments that are significant increases in density. So we'd like you to understand our concern about that. And I appreciate Mr. Huff's comments about the PTA and the kind of development he's trying to put in. I think that's admirable. I'd also like you to take into consideration that this isn't the only development in the area that is coming on and will be before you, earlier Z-44. I think that as a Meritage development was continued, but that is also a very large development, and it will have a significant impact on the same school, Mableton Elementary. When you put these together, it becomes a pretty big deal. And in some cases, and we've seen this in West Cobb, where there is a cumulative effect, and you can't always take a look at these things on a case-by-case basis. You have to understand the whole picture of everything that's coming. And so we hope that you'll take that concern into consideration. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Let's have the next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Michael Dixon, and I've got my wife Jennifer here with me and Christine Martindale, our neighbor on Burris Lane. We live on the dead end of Burris Lane, and I wrote this letter dated June the 22nd and sent that in. I think most of you have seen the letter, so I don't want to read the letter verbatim. We are not up here to necessarily oppose this development. We just have some concerns, and we just want to make sure that this development is done in a responsible manner, in a right manner. And our primary concern is Burris Lane and Burris Road. The road is very narrow. And as I said in the letter, when we meet a vehicle and traveling in the opposite direction, you almost have to come to a complete stop. And one time, I met the school bus, and I had no choice. I had to reverse into a private driveway to let that school bus pass. And we're very appreciative of the developer for willing to put some money towards improving the road conditions. We just want to make sure that this is done in a timely manner, because we know by law they're not required to do this. This is up to the county, and we just want to make sure that before the houses are built, and we have 153 homes, that the road improvements are well underway. And even, to be honest with you, even with the current zoning of 101 homes, we think just the existing infrastructure just doesn't support the additional traffic. And then our other concern is just our privacy. We've been, both us and the Martindales have been in our homes for 15 years. We're the only people that's ever lived in those homes. And our original builder, they tried to develop this subdivision more than 10 years ago, and they ran out of money, and it's just been an eyesore ever since. So we're hopeful that this new developer is going to come in and do a real good job. And we feel like he's going to do that. We're impressed by what we've seen so far. And I just want to thank Cobb County and the chairman and the planning commission for just giving us a chance to speak and voice our concerns. And our recommendation is to delay the approval for now of this rezoning until we can just be sure that the improvements and our concerns are addressed. So that's our recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. We appreciate your comments. Let's have the next speaker, please.
Good morning. My name is Robin Meyer, and I'm the chairman of the board and the chair of the zoning committee for the Mableton Improvement Coalition. I think Mr. Huff is correct in that we have had a good dialogue, had a good conversation, and made good progress on the plan for this subdivision. We are very happy to see new development in this part of our community. And so we do hope that we can work out these remaining issues. But as of now, they are not worked out. So there are quite a number of issues that range from the big ones to the little ones that we hope we will have more time to work on. And so I would echo Mr. Dixon in saying that we hope that you will hold on to this case for another month and give us time and give the applicant time to get some more details down on paper. At the outset, it's plain to the eye that regardless of what the, what the goals might be for this part of Mableton, this development does not fit the future land use map. We don't feel like we have to be a slave to the future land use map, but we do believe that we need to try to get just a little bit closer to it. The most recent site plan we had still does not include lot sizes. So all we know is that it's RA5 with five-foot, with variance requests for five-foot side setbacks and 50-foot wide lots. So we have no idea how many of those lots will be, will be in that category of variance. So with such a blanket variance as that, we would have to be in opposition to granting those variances. If we could have a little bit more detail as to where the variances are, how many lots, and the overall, and the average size or the specific size of the lots, we might be able to get past that. There's some smaller issues, such as the size of the community meeting room, that we'd like a specification about that so that this HOA, which is going to need to be quite active, can actually accommodate residents for meetings and neighborhood events and create that sense of community that we've all been talking about. The conversation in the previous case about the buffers was very interesting to hear. This is not, obviously, an OSC application, but there's been a lot of confusion in the writing of the stipulation letter and the discussion of these areas. I'm just going to even call them that, because apparently we have 10-foot landscape strips and 20-foot landscape strips, but they are, they may or may not be buffers. And they, the stipulations letter right now allows things such as invisible pet fencing and fencing specific, and owner-installed fencing at the rear property line. So I think we need to understand a little bit more about exactly how these, how this area is going to be managed and how the county is going to be looking at them. Probably the, one of the biggest issues has to do with DOT and the process by which the improvements are going to be made to Burris Drive and Veterans Memorial. We are very, very pleased that the developer understands the problem related to that road and the intersection. But the timing by which funds will flow to the county and allow these improvements to be made is troublesome. There's an upfront contribution of, I believe, $50,000. And then this most recent stipulation letter has a contribution of $2,000 per building permit pulled, I think is the shortest way to say it. But this would have, this would create a situation in which the $300,000 is not in the hands of the county until the last building permit is pulled. So all the truck, all the construction traffic and all those new homeowners are going to be moving into a subdivision that, where road improvements can't yet begin. I am assuming that the county would not start the process of letting the bid and doing the work until they had the funds in hand. If I'm mistaken about that, I would love to know that. So we've suggested moving up the payment schedule so that the last money is in the county's hands when the building permits are at the 50% mark. That seemed like a good stab in the dark, but it's, it's still, in my mind, is likely to create a situation where construction on Burris Lane probably doesn't begin until construction on the subdivision is about to end. So again, that's just some of the detailed sorts of things that we hope that we will have some more time to work out. Among them is that the visitor parking is not particularly well-distributed. We need an additional pocket park along the entrance road where those lots are already platted. And we'd like a little bit more specificity about the amenities that are going to be installed in the pocket parks. We're not looking for, you know, every park bench to be named and numbered, but we would like some understanding that that will be more than just a mowed, grassy area. So with that, I would ask that you give, give the community, the immediate neighbors, such as Mr. Dixon, the applicants, give us all another month to sort this out and see if we can't make this the best, best new neighborhood for Mableton as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. We are, let's don't have that. We are out of time, but did we have one other speaker? Did I see someone else? Okay, I think that's it. Okay, so we'll close this portion of the hearing. This is in District 4, so that's Mr. Porter-Gault. If you want to lead our discussion, please.
Thank you, Mike. Yeah, this case is an interesting one in that it's a proposed new subdivision in an area of the county that probably needs a little shot in the arm to help with the kind of declining retail and landscape along that section of Veterans Memorial. So that would be a positive to it. The fact that it's going to be a community that offers a full amenity package is a big positive, because I really can't remember the last time we've done a subdivision in District 4 with the full amenity package like this, with sports fields, pool, and clubhouse and all of that. So I view that as a positive for the community. The potential Burris Road upgrades is definitely a positive, because that's a, what I would call a very substandard road. It's very narrow, as Mr. Dixon said. You know, it's hard for two cars to pass each other, and if you get a school bus, I could see where that would be a problem. Also, the road at Veterans Memorial is very challenged. Where Burris comes out, it looks like a parking lot you're pulling into, not a county road. Just the way that all the curbs of everything just kind of, there is no curb. It's just asphalt flowing from the parking lots on each side and that. So to get an upgrade of, you know, turn lanes there with curbs and gutters, and we're talking about putting sidewalks and managing the stormwater down Burris Road, I think that's, that would be a real plus for, you know, the people on Burris Road and the community there. Certainly, this development would bring rooftops, and what we hear consistently from people in the areas, they want more restaurants, they want more retail options and things like that. And, you know, it's kind of the chicken and egg. And in this case, we know the rooftops have to go first before the commercial follows. And also this, there's some existing stormwater issues that occur on Burris Lane because the road wasn't really completed, and the water doesn't flow as it was designed to flow because the road wasn't completed. So this could help resolve those issues that I know some of the neighbors there on Burris Lane are suffering with. So that's, you know, kind of the positives that this could bring. But there's also some negatives that this could bring, a concern about neighborhood compatibility. You know, when you're talking about putting houses that would be 10 feet apart versus houses that are on half-acre lots that are, you know, very far apart, that gets to an issue. It's really a stark contrast. It would be just, you know, going from one thing to another. I understand that, you know, the adjoining property to the, or area subdivision to the west is in what's called a medium-density, but I don't believe that's developed as medium-density. That appears to be low-density to me in that. So that makes it a little bit of a stark contrast, even though maybe in the future, when that area is redeveloped, it would be redeveloped at a higher. Another concern is the number of variances and the size of the variances being requested. The first variance is, you know, the zoning they're applying for is RA5, which is residential attached or really detached with up to five units per acre. The code allows for a maximum of 20 acres for one of those, and this is 46.3 acres. Or essentially, this would be 130% larger than that type of subdivision's supposed to be. The second is lot widths of 50 feet, where the code calls for lot widths of 70 feet. So that's a 28% reduction. And then 10 feet between houses where the code calls for 15 feet, so that's a 33% reduction, is an issue. The county, I think we talked about it, not conforming to the land use plan, which calls for low-density residential. I do think this is a case where it makes sense to vary from the land use plan because of the adjacent medium-density, and also because this area really needs a little something to get it going. Now, the next subdivision that comes in this area, we may not allow that, that change, but because this is to kind of get the area going. On the proposed plan, they did redesign the plan and add some guest parking into the neighborhood from the original plan that was proposed with 157 houses, it's down to 153. But the guest parking's not well-distributed throughout the community, meaning people are likely to park on the street. And when you get houses that close together, it creates issues for the, you know, get a fire truck through, police, all of those kind of things. So when we talk about guest parking, if the houses are less than 20 feet apart, we really want that distributed throughout so that if somebody's going to a particular house, they would use the guest parking versus parking at the street. And this plan doesn't accomplish that right now. The home elevations, which are the drawings of the homes that have been supplied, are still the generic ones when they were negotiating with several builders. We now know which builder. We've been told it's going to be Smith Douglas Homes. So we'd like to see elevations that are of what they're actually going to build, and that conformed to the STIP letter with having 50% brick or stone on the elevation. Some of them don't, don't match the stipulation letter. When this was applied for and what was released out into the newspaper that everybody caught on was the homes were going to be 2,500 square foot and up. And then it came back down to, we're going to have some ranches 1,800, and then two stories starting at 2,000 square feet. I understand the reality of the area in that they are going to have to have some smaller, some smaller footprints just to be in the right price point. But there's been a commitment that we're going to have larger homes, and right now, the STIP letter says ranches of 1,800 square feet, and everything else 2,000 to 3,500, which is a pretty big range. So I'd like to see some, you know, no more than 10% of the homes under 2,000 square feet, and no more than 70% of the homes under 2,500 square feet, so that we know we still get some of those larger homes into the subdivision where the, where the lots make sense for them. And hopefully, there's more than one ranch style, that only ranch isn't just an 1,800-square-foot ranch, that there's a 2,000-some square-foot ranch plan is available. So I'd like to see a variety of elevations of what they're really going to build. So I think we're lacking on that, and I thought we would have picked that up with the continuance that we gave last month, but we didn't. You know, we don't really know what size lots these are, what the dimensions are. So we'd like to see, actually on the plan, the lot sizes and dimensions. And John, correct me if I'm wrong, are they supposed to pull the floodplain out of the density calculation?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, so the density on this is calculated incorrectly right now? I thought that was the case. Let's see. You know, the letter calls for 2,000-square-foot clubhouse, but I know Mableton Improvement would like to know, you know, what size is actual meeting room for people? I think they were looking for it to be at least 1,500 square feet, because there are other things in the clubhouse, restrooms, kitchenette, things like that. Just work out that detail. You know, a 20-foot landscape buffer, I think if we're going to switch the density to this degree, would be appropriate adjoining all- degree, would be appropriate adjoining all properties except for the railroad tracks. But, you know, it's pretty much right now on the western and the eastern side on the plan, but these properties on the southern edge are not really getting that same protection, and those are people on very large lots that probably deserve that same, that same protection. So I'd like to see that, that added. And I think the buffers are going to have to be planted. The letter says either natural or that. You know, if there's enough vegetation there that Arbus feels it's okay, and that it's not going to get killed during the development, and these are small lots, so there's going to be a lot of clear cutting, maybe there's some trees and things that can be saved, but we want to make sure it provides good screening to the neighbors, not just, not just the space, because, you know, in some cases, we're backing up two houses to one. So we want to have that. And because we've had problems with people getting into the buffers, we'd like to be, there to be some kind of decorative fencing, split rails, something like that at the, at the beginning of the buffer, and make clear to the people they're not allowed to go into that buffer. I know the stip letter talked about, well, they may put invisible fences in the buffer and things like that. We really don't want anything back in the buffers. With regard to the Burris Road improvements, I think there's a creative financing plan in there that, that the applicants proposed, which isn't typical. The county's done stuff like that in rare cases before, I understand, and, and this may be a case where they consider that again. But I really feel like that's a board of commissioners' decision, and that the planning commission really shouldn't go forward with recommending something that's outside of what staff recommends, and, and staffs basically come forward with, we'd really like to have all the money upfront. But if it doesn't all come upfront, we'd like to see half upfront, essentially, when they pull the land disturbance permit, and half when they do the final plat, which would be getting it far earlier than the plan that's been, been proposed. The, the other item, and, and this, once again, I think will be up to the board of commissioners, staff has estimated the cost of these improvements at 359,000. The developers offered 300,000, and I really view these as necessary to have a development back there, you know? So I think, you know, from our perspective, I think asking for 359s the right number. If the board of commissioners wants to negotiate and say, hey, the county will, will throw in some funds into this as well, and I have no idea if there's funds in the county budget to do that or not. You know, I'm not saying that it's bad, but I think that's strictly up to the board of commissioners and not something we should be doing. I concur with, with Mapleton Improvement that we probably need to define the pocket parks a little bit better, just kind of generally what they're going to have, things like that, and, and their locations a little bit better. We go a long, long stretch, you know, when you enter the property without having any, any kind of little amenity there. Most of them are at the back right now. The stipulation refers to five phases, and it used to have a whole bunch of things in various phases. I think the most current stipulation letter only refers to the amenity package being built in Phase Three, but there's no definition of what the phases are, so there'd be no way to track that, that this is when it should be built. So, you know, I would say maybe we could say the amenity package will be completed before 60% of the houses are, are occupied, before the COs on 60%. Also want to cover, because I did get Mr. Dixon's letter and, and a number of things that, that they asked for, and, and that, I know the developers, you know, were trying to solve most of those issues. A couple of the things I wanted to mention is a request for an 80-foot buffer between their property and that, and 80-foot by county code wouldn't even be required if they were putting commercial there next to you. They'd have to be building like an industrial plant to get something in that, in that size of a buffer. So that's, you know, 20 foot's double what would be required going from the existing zoning to a little bit more dense zoning. 10 foot's required by code, so 20 foot's, I think, you know, doubling that. I think that's pretty, you know, pretty reasonable. I know there was also a request to not have second-story windows on those first two houses looking into their backyards. I think it would be reasonable to ask for ranch plans on those first two lots, just to, you know, to address that concern. Let's see, I know you mentioned traffic on Burris Road, we've covered that. You had mentioned a traffic light at Veterans Memorial in Burris, and that would be strictly up to Georgia Department of Transportation, not even Cobb DOT can't even do the study or, or determine whether it goes there or not because it's a state-federal highway. And, but the traffic has to be there first, is my understanding, so the subdivision would have to be built first, and then they'd have to study it to see if it warranted it. And also, my understanding is that, that DOT staff's doubtful that it would be warranted based on the number of homes and that. It just isn't, even though it seems like a lot, it's just not enough to, to get to that level. I know you mentioned whether the rezoning signs were posted correctly. They're actually required to be posted on the property. They can't go off on other properties in the area and post the signs. It's got to be actually on. But we do, they have to mail out a letter to any property owner within 1,000 feet, so that's how those people close by get noticed if they don't see the signs. Let's see. And you had mentioned you wanted to make sure the houses are brick or stone, and the stipulation letter does, does address that there'll be at least 50% brick or stone, which is a little bit more stringent than the current requirements, that there'd just be some. You know, I do think completing the street will rectify your stormwater issues where the water piles up right there at the end of the street, because it's just not able to move like it's designed because it was never completed. So I think that will, you know, take care of that part of the issue. I know the applicant's working with you on your particular stormwater with your pools and, and where your French drain is and that kind of stuff, and hopefully, we can get all that nailed down. You know, as far as gating, right now, they're proposing public streets, and gating with just one entrance would be, I think, kind of problematic with this many houses, because that gate has good potential to be breaking down and, and people not being able to get in or out when it breaks and things like that. The other thing is the detention ponds, if they're public streets with access from the right-of-way, will be maintained by the county. If they gate it, those ponds would all be maintained by the subdivision, and in our experience, when they're maintained by the subdivision, they're usually not that well-maintained, which is why the county would prefer to maintain them, to make sure that we don't get flooding and, and things like that. But if they're private, the county wouldn't have access to them to maintain them, so therefore, it would fall on the homeowners association. Also, if it's gated, the homeowners association would be responsible for maintaining all the streets when they need repaved and all of that. That puts a lot of cost on the homeowners association to be doing all those maintenance items. So typically, developers don't want to gate it, and it's probably not a good idea in this particular case. And just from a, a general DOT, you know, putting a stop sign right in the middle of the street just isn't a normal thing to do or something that, that they really allow. Once the houses are in, if you're having a speed problem on the road, there's a petition process to put in what they call speed tables, or some people call them speed humps, but that has to be studied once the traffic's there. It can't be a, an upfront, it's got to be petitioned by the neighbors with a certain percentage of people signing off that, that they want it. I don't know all the details, but the county has a process for that. So I wanted to kind of address down, down those. And I, I also want just, you know, to have you keep in mind too, because I know you'd like a bigger buffer to the subdivision, but keep in mind, if this wasn't approved, somebody could just go pull permits and build a house right next to you with no buffer, no anything. You know, just a house, just like your neighbor on the other side, they can, just, all they have to do is meet those original zoning stipulations. So I want to make sure you're, you know, think in those terms that 20 foot's probably a whole lot better than nothing as a buffer on that. So those were kind of, what I'd like to do is ask somebody from DOT to come up and address when you would expect the Burris Road improvements to be made, and whether it's dependent on when the developer gets the funds to you and, and all those kinds of things, or whether that's all been discussed yet, or...
Amy Diaz, DOT. We have had some preliminary discussion, but because we have not worked out when we are receiving the money, then no, that timing has not yet been set.
Okay, so a little bit more time to, to work on that would be good.
Correct.
Okay.
May I ask a question?
Certainly.
With respect to the improvements along Burris Road, do you anticipate you will have to acquire additional right-of-way if you're going to be putting in sidewalks, curb and gutter, and all of those improvements?
From the preliminary look at it, we don't believe that we had need right-of-way along Burris Road itself, but at the intersection of Burris Road and Veterans, we do believe we will need right-of-way. That is a very tight intersection, and there is a wall along the east corner that we, we will need to go into that parking lot, and that is one of the reasons, other than it is off-site, is one of the reasons why we would have to handle the construction, because that will require a right-of-way acquisition.
At the intersection?
At the intersection.
But there is currently enough county right-of-way for curb and gutter sidewalks along Burris Lane?
That is my understanding.
Okay.
But along Burris Road. Burris Lane is the part that is...
Oh, right.
Yeah. It's hard to follow because it changes name. Thank you.
I've got a question related to, to that. Robyn Meyer brought up the, that's, the sequencing of the funding and the, and the need, you know, maybe to have that money before you could do any improvements. Is that, is that in fact the case? You need to have the money before you can start doing things on this road? Or do you have the wherewithal to start, and then the money comes later?
It's my understanding that having the money makes it easier to move it up in the schedule.
Okay.
That basically locating the funding for it can push it much further down on the schedule if we don't have it in hand.
Okay, good. And then I would just observe that purely from a sales marketing point of view, I would expect that they'd want to make the, you know, the developer would want to make those, have those improvements made before they started trying to sell the houses with lots of construction traffic potentially otherwise on that section of Burris Road. So I would think that it would make sense for Pebblebrook to, you know, fund this early on. That's just a comment.
Let, let me weigh in on that. In fact, we may even need to get Dan Dobry to come up and comment on this, since he's the expert from Croy Engineering. I'm concerned, a project this large is going to generate an awful lot of construction traffic. We're talking heavy traffic from construction trucks, all the related equipment that has to come in there. If we put $300,000 to $400,000 worth of improvements on Burris Road, Burris Lane, sidewalk, curb and gutter, and then have it torn up by the construction traffic, at what point do you really want to make your improvements to, to Burris Road and Burris Lane? Dan, you want to weigh in on that? Give us your name for the record.
Yeah, for, for the record, my name is Dan Dobry with Croy Engineering. And Commissioner Terry, you're absolutely correct that there, there is a balance there with regards to the potential damage that the construction vehicles could impose on the improved infrastructure. The, but for the most part, the, I would contend that the county's development standards for residential development, that we don't experience significant degradation, you know, as the subdivisions are being constructed, so that it, it is a legitimate concern, but I'm not sure that it's one which would delay moving forward with the subdivision while, while that work is either done or scheduled to be done. So...
I've, I've observed in the past that on situations like this, curb, gutter, and sidewalk can go ahead and be done, and then there is a preliminary paving that is then repaired after the construction is done, is finished. And, and it's just a timing. The, the whole point of all of this is, I see that we do have, in the stipulation letter, stipulation number 10 contains a paragraph related to the funding and so forth. I don't think it goes far enough. Now, as Gault said, and one of us, I've forgotten, maybe it's Skip, said, we don't really want to, us, we shouldn't get involved in that detail. I think that's between DOT, maybe the county attorney, and I'm suggesting at the least a clerk's note that says that, that, that maybe all that needs to be worked out, payment schedules and the rest of it, before zoning is actually finally approved at the BOC level. So I don't know what we're going to do here today. It may be here and hold, it may be something else, but I think we at least need a clerk's note that sends the message to the BOC that we've looked at this, and we really think some more work needs to be done by DOT, county attorneys, and the Thompsons, and, and possibly you as well, Mr. Dobry. So I'm not convinced that we have that nailed down. While I've got the floor, let me just say, I agree with a lot of what Gault said, in fact, I agree with everything Gault said, also with Robyn. Thank you, Dan, very much for those comments. But I, in my mind, we still have density issues, parking issues, green space, park, call it pocket park issues, a lot. I think the lots are too small, they're too narrow, they're not big enough, in my opinion. The distance between homes, all of that, I think, has to be worked out, which says to me that maybe RA5 is not even the right zoning classification. Judy suggested in our work session PRD might be considered. So there's just, in my mind, there's still a lot of details, little details in some cases, big ones in others, that have not yet been worked out. And I think a here and hold might be the appropriate way to go. That's my comment.
I was going to say, that's, that's the direction I'm headed, and I can imagine that, that Parks probably sees that coming his way as well. I have alerted Commissioner Cupid, and, and actually Debbie alerted her as well to the, the road improvement financing, so that she can start looking at it, and everybody can, can start having discussions about it to see if that's something the county's willing to do or not, or, and how would it be funded, and when it, when it would be, you know, when the actual work would be done, because funding's one thing, and actually completing the work's another, or payments, one thing. Funding, it's got to be funded before you can do work, obviously. The money has to be there to pay the, the contractors one way or another, and that, and, and I do agree, and I was going to mention, that, that I think PRD would be the appropriate category for this. That's one that, that's rarely used anymore, but it's still a viable option that we can delete to PRD. What is, that's a planned residential development, and one of the requirements of it is for each lot, there has to be 1,000 square foot of open space. Well, this one has plenty of open space in it to meet that requirement right now. So I think that's, that's reasonable. It has an 8,400 square foot minimum lot size, which is up from the RA5, so that's going to make it a little less dense. And I'm going to suggest a 60-foot minimum lot width instead of 50. So essentially, for every six lots there, right now, you'd have five. You drop out about 25 lots, which I think would change the look and feel a lot, having that separation between them. That also solves our distance between homes, because we'll say a minimum of 20 feet between homes instead of 10. So we're just taking that extra 10 feet and putting it between the homes. That solves our parking issue, because at 20 feet between homes, the fire marshal no longer requires that additional visitor parking to be in place. So, because then, you know, there's enough room, if somebody does park on the street, you know, they aren't parking right up against each other typically. That's their experience, and it doesn't create problems for the fire trucks and ambulances and things like that. You know, a front setback of 25 feet, and the, the, the PRD category is site plan specific, so all of the setbacks and that are determined in the site plan and, and at zoning versus already being written into the code. But I would say a front setback of 25 feet... But I would say a front setback of 25 feet so that we maintain the driveway length, because that's the other thing that gets to the problem with, with guest parking is when the driveways get too short, then people park on the street because there's not enough room to park in the driveway. A rear setback of at least 30 feet, and that would match the RA kind of zonings, and a side setback of 10 feet. And I would like to say a minimum of a 20-foot planted buffer to all external properties other than the railroad tracks. So that would be, you know, east, south and west. And we'd like those to be owned by the HOA, not be in the lots. But I think what would be reasonable to do is if it's a 60-foot wide lot and, and a 20-foot buffer that's 1,200 square feet, on those lots that have that buffer behind it, give a variance of 1,200 square feet on the lot size so that they're effectively getting what looks like an 8,400 square foot lot, but we're having the HOA own it so that those people can't go into it. So we're still giving the same look and feel, but we're just putting that in the HOA's control. And, you know, I'd like to see a conservation easement on those in favor of Cobb County as well so that we know nobody's going into those buffers. So I think that would be the only variance from the PRD standard that I'd want to see. You know, at the entrance to the subdivision near the road, rather than bring the 20-foot buffer all the way there, you know, put your monument signs and some really nice landscaping, because I don't think anybody wants to see full trees all the way right as you drive in. You need a little softening of that buffer. So that would be the, the change on the 20-foot buffer. Like, see the home elevations that actually represent what they're going to build with the 50% brick or stacked stone on the elevations so that we know this is what it is. And they've already brought out a 40-foot product, kind of industry standard, it may be 38 feet or 39 feet, but stay with that. We don't want to see the 30-foot product, which then doesn't have any windows on the first floor outside. So that's something that they've already proposed. I just want to make sure that's clear. Like, see, no more than 10% of the homes be less than 2,000 square feet, and no more than 70% be less than 2,500 square feet. And when they proposed this, the whole subdivision was supposed to start at 2,500 square feet. So I don't think that's too, too onerous to make sure, because I know there's people who read those articles and they're expecting bigger homes. We've talked about that, you know, and I would, I would say from a planning commission standpoint that we would recommend staff recommendations on the Burris Road improvements, which would be 359,000, 50% due at land disturbance permit, 50% due at final plat. You know, but with the note that that's subject to negotiations with the Board of Commissioners because if, if they deem it worthy of doing some other plan, that's fine with me. Make sure we get the density calculation right by removing the flood playing, better define the pocket parks. And also a, a stipulation that the, that the garages are not to be converted to any other use, that they'll be primarily for parking of vehicles with only incidental storage, that does not interfere with the parking of two vehicles in the garage, and that, that restriction should be in the covenants as well. We've talked about that. And minor modifications, we'd like to get, it's once again been dropped down from, from the full list, so just make that the full list of minor modifications. And that the first two lots in the subdivisions have ranch-style homes that are adjacent to the existing homes. And that's kind of my direction, which is kind of long. With that, I'm going to make a motion that we hold this until, until September zoning.
Second?
We have motion to second for discussion. The reason Gault is being very specific, the reason all of us made these specific changes or recommendations, I should say, is because we need to send the clear message to this applicant and to their attorney and to Mr. Dobry what we're looking for. And so that gives them something to work on if we do agree to hold this. And so we have to go into all of this detail so they know, and when they leave here, they know what we would like them to work on before it gets to the BOC. So I agree with the motion. We have a second. Any further discussion? Okay, Skip?
I'm, I'm sitting here, you know, we just had a case where we said the application didn't fit, and, and so we are recommending denial. And this, and I'm trying to figure out, we're, we're talking about a lot of changes, you know, density changes, the overall designation of the zoning category. I mean, all that sounds good, but we're doing a lot to reshape this in a very significant way, unlike what we did before. So I'm asking, I'm asking myself, what's the difference? And, and I think, and I want you to tell me if I'm right, the difference is this, the way it's currently proposed and the way it would be if they did everything you're asking for, it's a residential development. And this community needs a residential development or single-family homes, unlike the other one where maybe that wasn't the case. Is that the difference?
I think that's a big difference. I think one of the big differences to me in giving a little bit more density here is the fact that we're going to get the Burris Road improvements that are really desperately needed because they could go start pulling permits and probably build between 90 and 100 homes there anyway. So with, with these changes, it's probably going to be in, and those 90 and 100, they probably wouldn't put in the amenity and, you know, the complete amenity like they're proposing. And we get the Burris Road, and this will probably come in somewhere around 125 to 130 homes, I'm guessing, when they re-figure it out at 8,400 square foot lots and, and all of those things. So we're giving them a little bonus, but we're getting the 20-foot buffers, which are significant to all those other homes to try and offset the density a, a bit. But it's, it is also an area that, that we need to spur a little development, so...
Yeah, and that's exactly right. That, that's what I was going to say. The difference is, if you look out here, we don't have 51 people standing up saying, "Don't do it." We have people saying, "Do it." Mableton needs a kick, a jumpstart. They've made some significant improvements already, especially around the new school and that whole area. But this part, on out to Veterans Memorial, has yet to be, has yet to see any developments like this. It's needed and it's wanted. It may be a little too dense, we have all the issues Gault laid out for us and, and these other folks laid out for us, Robin laid out for us. I'm perfectly willing to hold this and give them a chance to make these few adjustments and come back with a plan that we can buy into and that the BOC will buy into. So any further discussion?
I just, just a brief comment. This is the kind of developer and development that we want to see down in South Cobb that we haven't been seeing. We want to, we need rooftops down there to support, support the existing commercial. That commercial is just about dead because we haven't had any new development come in. So this is a good compromise. I don't want to over-stipulate it so that the developer backs out and we don't have the development. We have a chance at 46 acres. We don't get that opportunity many times. And while I agree that the lot size should come up because we're wanting to have a variety of floor plans out there, while you had to explain everything, I don't think it's as complicated as it might have sounded with all the talking going on, because to me, the bottom line is increase the lot size, show your buffers and work out the traffic. I'm condensing it a little bit, but those are the main issues for me. So that traffic is something that DOT, the other thing I'm concerned about when you collect money off the lots, what if we only get to phase one and for some reason we don't get to phase two or three, or the builder leaves or whatever? So I'm a little uncomfortable of charging, you know, a fee on that. So those, during this whole time, these are things that are going to have to be worked out, not with us but with Cobb DOT, and I think it can be worked out. But I think it's a good project. I think it can look good, and I think it's something that's really needed in this part of the county.
I'll be real surprised if Parks is able to come back and takes everything that Gault suggested and incorporates it into a new plan. That's called compromise and that's called negotiation, and we'll get there.
Yeah, I, I just don't want to leave it unanswered. I, I wonder if Dennis Campbell could back, come back up if he's here.
Dennis left.
No, he's here. I think he's back there. Dennis, as you, as you come back up, you said that this will have a significant impact, this one and potentially the other, other one that's not too, too far away, Z44, will have a, potentially a large, significant impact on enrollment, particularly at Mableton Elementary School. If this moves ahead, what do you do?
I, I'm not sure I understand the question. Moves ahead in what way?
Well, it's going to, this is going to have a significant impact on pushing the enrollment even further over capacity at Mableton. So what do you do with respect to Mableton and then potentially Garrett Middle School? You know, you've got mobile classrooms or not, that's not the right word. You've got portable, you know...
Portable classrooms.
Portable classrooms.
Typically when that school is, is at a point where they can't squeeze another kid in a classroom and they've, they've built up those classrooms as much as they can with students and used every closet and, and space in the school, they'll ask for the portable classrooms, which is what we'll have to put there to provide more space and more capacity for the school. That's generally...
And then eventually, if, if the need supports it, you would convert those portable classrooms into something more permanent, I would expect, right?
Yes, that'd be the case. Unfortunately, with our SPLUS plan as it sits, currently in SPLUS 4, which ends in 2018, and even the next SPLUS, there wasn't money provided for this particular school to expand, physically expand the school. And as I said in one other meeting, that there just isn't enough money in SPLUS to do everything you want to do, so you have to cut it back. And some things are left behind like Mableton, like Du West, that we've talked about before. So you're sort of stuck there and we'll just be adding portables after portables there.
Is the school board going to look at redistricting once they build a new Leland Army Elementary? Is that going to have more capacity than the existing one that may shift things a little bit, or...
It, it will have some more capacity. I can't say how the redistricting might come about or what might happen there. Those plans haven't been finalized or...
Okay.
For me, the, just the last comment. The bottom line for me is the Cobb Board of Education, I have never, as long as I've been doing this, I've never seen them not educate a child, whether the school was overcrowded or not. So every child gets an education. Sometimes we have to do a little bit over because we haven't had any new development go on, and you try to spur all that. So I will say that Cobb, y'all go out of your way to make sure the child gets the education regardless.
Thank you. We, we try.
Well, so to answer my question, basically you have ways, they may not be the ways you prefer, but you have ways to address that capacity increase regardless. And that's the good news. It just may not be the way everybody would like it to be. You know, I don't want my kid in a, in a portable classroom. You hear that all the time. Well, my kids were, were educated in portable classrooms, one at Du West, and they did really well. So, you know, it's not that bad.
That's what's wrong with me now, I was.
Okay, we need to, we need to move on. We, we have a motion on the table. We do have a second. Any further discussion? I hope not. Let's get this voted on. Call for the vote? Okay, so we are going to hold this for 30 days, is that right? For 30 days, and we'll see a nice new plan when, when you come back before us again. It is lunchtime, so we're going to take a one-hour lunch break. We'll be back about 1 o'clock to continue with our next case. Thanks, everyone. We stand adjourned. Okay, we're back after our lunch break, and so I think we'll just jump back into it. Mr. Peterson, what's our next case, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. And the next two cases are connected. They're both a storage facility, so we're going to hear those together and make separate motions. So I'm going to call these together. Resoning case Z37, 3757 Floyd Road Property LLC, request rezoning from PSC to ONI for the purpose of a climate-controlled self-storage facility in land lots 848 and 849 of the 19th District. The property is located on the north side of Hurt Road and on the east side of Floyd Road. SLEP 7, 3757 Floyd Road Property LLC, request a special land use permit for the purpose of a climate-controlled self-service storage facility in land lots 848 and 849 of the 19th District. The property is located on the north side of Hurt Road and on the east side of Floyd Road. The applicant's representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z37 or SLEP 7?
This, this is the self-storage. This is the self-storage.
Well, I'll let the record show there's no one opposed.
I'll take care of that, Kevin.
I try to, I try to be nice and fair.
This is Z37, and this is the climate-controlled self-storage building?
Yes.
Okay, now, all right, is anybody opposed to that one, Z37? If you are, raise your hand. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, John, are we ready?
We'll save them for the next one.
Now we'll give it to Kevin.
All right, I'll save it, save them for the next one. Good afternoon, and I'm Kevin Moore here on behalf of the applicant and owner in this application for rezoning. This first application is, and we were just talking about it, is this quote self-storage. This is property that's located on Hurt Road, just east of its intersection with Floyd Road and then just east of Austell Road. And what most people call this is the old Target Store. Would be the easiest way to, to explain where this is exactly and what we're proposing. And what we're proposing is a rezoning to the Office Institutional ONI zoning category. It's currently zoned PSC, which is something we don't see very often, because that's called Planned Shopping Center. And Planned Shopping Center was the old shopping center category before we revamped the zoning ordinances in the 80s and 90s, and PSC kind of went away as a, as a category. So this is from PSC to, which is Planned Shopping Center, to ONI Office Institutional. And in addition, we've combined this per your custom with a special land use permit application because we are seeking to have this proposal be used for a climate-controlled self-storage. And what that's going to do is completely repurpose the old Target Site. It's been vacant for quite some time. It's basically an eyesore, looking, it's an eyesore looking for a solution. We believe that a climate-controlled self-storage facility is not only ideal, it's perfect. It allows for the building to be completely repurposed, but utilize that existing building for that. In terms of an impact and a traffic, and just impact in general, and traffic impact specifically, there is no better use than a climate-controlled self-storage facility. It produces very, very little traffic, produces very, very little noise, produces very, very little impact. It doesn't have many ripples that, that go from it, especially when you're repurposing such a, an old vacant building. Let me turn now to the, what's on your screen, which is a, just kind of a zoning illustration to kind of point out some of these points around it, and then we'll turn to the site plan itself.
All right, just in terms of the overall area, you see, this is the site, and it's actually about half this site. It's this portion of the site, the eastern portion of this PSC site. This is Hurt Road, Floyd Road as it comes into the Austell Road intersection here and Hurt Road as it continues on. And what you see, this is part of an overall larger community activity center. You see all the older categories of general commercial and PSC. This general commercial here is an existing shopping center. The World's Farmer Market is, is the predominant use there, does a great job. In addition, what you see is, in terms of, once you leave and come down Hurt Road, what you're seeing there is SC. That's the precursor to RSL. SC stands for suburban condominium, and that's what we first kind of came out with in Cobb County for an age-restricted development. And SC here and SC here were, were by the same developer and were zoned about the same time. And that's suburban condominium for age-restricted development, up to five units per acre, and that is, then those are close. You also notice of particular importance is this RM12, which is an existing multifamily apartment community that comes in behind the shopping center here. And that gives you a flavor for what's in the area, and it should also give you a flavor that in this particular area, other than the SC, the age-restricted community which was built a decade or more or so ago, there, there's not a whole lot of new in this area, which is why you find the Target Store, which is located here existing, to have been vacant and vacated and be that way for quite some time. And I'll turn to the site plan itself, which is pretty straightforward. And I'll turn to the site plan itself, which is pretty straightforward. Once he brings that into focus and view. Thank you, David. And from a site plan perspective, again, here is Hurt Road. And what you're seeing here is the existing Target retail building, which will be retrofitted. The building footprint is not being expanded. The existing building will be utilized and retrofitted inside and out. A couple of things about the site plan. You'll see that the access to Hurt Road is located here. That's an existing access, and you can see how close it is, right on the existing property line between this retail property here and the adjacent suburban condominium, age-restricted community. You'll see that's where that location is there for that existing entrance access drive, which will remain. The idea here is to allow that to remain. A little bit about that entrance access, you'll notice it goes and it continues on off our property to the north. And actually, that access continues all the way up behind the adjoining shopping center, the World Farmers Market, and is used by them and will continue to be used by deliveries to that shopping center, because that's the way out. Once you get in behind that existing shopping center, there is no other way to turn around if you're a truck delivering or anything else, other than to come out and come down this way, which is how they've been using it, and this is an established access way for that. So that's why it will remain open, because it has to for that reason. In addition, you'll notice that what we're gonna be doing is relocating and providing parking here, as well as their existing docks to the rear will be used for pulling around, so this will actually be the front of the building. And then relocating where the existing docks are now will be used for people to access and unload there. So, again, the idea is to repurpose this building to a use which we think is just tremendously ideal for this location from an impact standpoint. It will involve completely re-landscaping the frontage and also re-landscaping along this adjoining border, which we'll get to in the next following application, where it's proposed for a new residential use. Now, I'm just gonna turn and make one final comment.
I think it's also helpful with climate-controlled self-storage facilities, what they can do, and this was a picture that was provided to us, and we've used that and referenced it as what we are proposing, our proposed climate-controlled self-storage facility will look like as a representative sample, to show you that this is the kind of thing we want to do here. And that is, you really end up with a complete reskining of the building, and you're adding a very attractive new look and one. You know, for all intents and purposes, the reason why I think these are successful in terms of their impact and acceptance these days is because they end up looking like this, when they're done correctly and done well. They look like just a very nice building, and it doesn't have a lot of activity that's generated from it. I do want to mention of your staff recommendations, especially would point out to you the staff recommendations for the special land use permit, when the staff correctly and as required goes through the various questions, all 15 of them, and answers those in a positive fashion in support of this application. We think that's important. Those are very factually-based questions that are asked and required for any analysis by your professional staff for a special land use permit application. And those were to the good, as the applicant would say, from that reception from staff. In addition, we have a stipulation letter that's dated July 26, 2017, and it basically stipulates to everything I've just spoken to. Couple of items I want to point out. Number one is it does require that this limits operation, the business operation, to regular office hours, which is standard. Do want to make mention to you that that's the business operation, when you can come in and do your business. There will be secured access for, that's available to anybody that actually already has a unit there, rents a storage unit, where they can have card key and secured access to access that anytime. But it just means the activity surrounding the use will be limited to regular office hours. It's not a 24-hour operation, quite different. Lastly, I just want to address two items that are on the DOT recommendations. You received an updated DOT recommendation from Cobb DOT yesterday as it relates to dedication of right-of-way along Hurt Road. That's because right in there, along that Hurt Road, along Hurt Road adjacent to this, which will also be used as an existing detention pond that's right on the road, it's got already a built poured concrete wall that is right on the road. Our concern, and once we talked about that with DOT, is that we don't want to dedicate right-of-way placing that within the public right-of-way. Neither do they. And so we're gonna cooperate with DOT to make sure that's coordinated, so that any dedication is not necessarily automatic and required, but cooperated with DOT, because what we don't want is to have, what will be our responsibility to maintain and refurbish detention pond become the public's. The last piece from the DOT requirement, and I spoke with DOT about this, is our access on Hurt Road, they've asked for a larger turning radius, but as I pointed out to you, that's gonna be difficult to do. It's right up against the property line. It's been functioning well for over a decade as is, and we're just concerned that that could get where we can't accommodate it, given the limitation on right-of-way and given the limitation on our property line. With that, we would appreciate your consideration and recommendation of approval to the Board of Commissioners consistent with your staff's recommendation in our letter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Went over just a little bit, so we'll take care of that. And just for the record, was there anyone here in opposition to S L E P 7 or Z-37? Okay, I didn't believe there was. We just need to get that on the record. So not seeing and hearing any, we'll close the public portion. This is also in District 4, so Gault Porter will lead our discussion. Mr. Porter.
Thank you, Mike. I think, you know, overall, I think this is a good project to repurpose one of these big-box stores. You know, what happened in this area, I don't think it's any secret to the people up here, is the East West Connector opened up, and all the big-box stores moved to the East West Connector with new stores. And then we were left over with various retail along kind of this more Ostel Road corridor, you know, that struggled more. So to kick a little bit of life into this center that's just been sitting there, I guess it was used for storage for a while, but, you know, really hasn't had any real positive look to it or update, I think is a positive for it. I'd like to have somebody come up from DOT to talk about the driveway that Kevin just talked about, to see. I know we already dealt with the right-of-way with the revised comment. Just want to check on.
Amy Diaz, DOT.
Yes, and I think you were asking for, what, a right-and-turn, right-and-left, or a decel, or what exactly was it?
Normally, we would have asked for either a decel lane at this location, but because that decel lane is not along their property frontage, we instead asked for an improved turn radius at that intersection.
Okay.
They have come back and said that they had the difficulties that they described to you. We would still like to see that, but we are willing to let that be worked out in plan review.
Okay, okay, so we'll just, we'll just make that turn at plan review.
Yes, we would like to see it held as a comment.
Okay, okay. We'll leave it in there then.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, you know, the other comment I have is the picture of the building that was prepared is for a two-story or more than two-story facility, hard to tell, but this is a single-story building. And the community comments I have is just to drop the stucco part and just make it a brick building, you know, with accents and that. So I'm gonna reflect that in there, because the picture doesn't really fit the building. So, and a couple other minor changes, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion regarding Z-37 to recommend approval subject to all the following. All staff comments and recommendations not otherwise in conflict. Site plan received with the stipulation letter from John Moore dated July 26, 2017. And all stipulations from that same letter not otherwise in conflict with the following changes to the letter. Item number five deals with not expanding the building, and it currently says does not propose expansion. So I want to remove does not propose expansion of and replace that with will not expand. So we're clear. Item number six, I asked to remove the stucco and stucco type from it, where it talks about architecture. And also remove where it says shall be substantially similar to the rendering, because that rendering doesn't really reflect it. And incorporated here by reference, so the revised sentence should read, "The exterior of the existing structure shall be renovated and shall be primarily brick and glass with accents or combination thereof." On item number 15, on the dumpster enclosure, it currently says wooden screen gate, and want to replace that with steel screen gate, because development standards don't allow wooden. And item number three talks about landscaping that, and after, where it says county arperous, add and district commissioner for the approval of landscaping. And on the minimum 15-foot landscape buffer for the proposed screening to be placed for the purpose, not for the purpose of screening, to be placed on the western property line, this buffer is in addition to any buffer that may be required on the adjoining property. And what's happening there is, when I talked to John Moore, they're gonna put 15 feet on this property and 15 feet on the other property, that's gonna be our next case, to make for a 30-foot buffer. I think that's fine. And, and all fencing to be wrought iron style fencing unless other fencing is approved by the district commissioner. And I think we could add this to the consent agenda.
Where will the fencing be? I know they have fencing behind it that faces, I believe, that Settlers Walk back there.
You know, they're gonna have, it refers to detention, but really, the detention's on the other parcel. And they talked about possibly putting fencing along the road, but they really aren't sure because they can't fully fence off the property, because they have this easement access coming through for the trucks. So there may not be any fencing. It's, I don't think they've fully defined it yet, so I just want to say if it's gonna be wrought iron fencing, or if it's gonna have fencing, we don't want chain link. You know, we want it to look attractive, so either wrought iron or approved by the district commissioner.
Are they gonna be renting trucks?
No, no. One of the stipulations in the letter is no truck rentals, no vehicles, no storage of vehicles, no outside storage whatsoever. So it's just gonna be everything stored inside. The only rental trucks you'll see are those while they're delivering, you know, unloading and loading.
And will they have on-site staff during regular work hours?
Yes, they will.
I'm good. Anybody else have a question for Gault? Okay. You have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, just a question. I haven't found a decision here somewhere that there's no living in here.
Well, it wouldn't be allowed by the zoning anyway, so that wouldn't, yeah. I don't remember if the letter says it, but the zoning classification wouldn't allow it. So, we ready?
All right, anybody else call for the vote? Okay, so that is approved 5-0. Thank you very much.
Okay, then I have another motion to.
We do, we need to do the S L E P, if you will.
With regard to S L E P 7, recommend approval subject to all of the following. All staff comments and recommendations not otherwise in conflict, and all the stipulations of Z-37 that we just went through.
Okay, you have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Calling for the vote. That's also approved 5-0. Okay, thank you, Kevin, very much. Mr. Peterson, what is next, sir?
Resoning case Z-43, 3757 Floyd Road Property LLC, request rezoning from PSC and G C to RMA for the purpose of a townhome community in land lots 848 and 849 of the 19th District. The property is located on the north side of Hurt Road and on the east side of Floyd Road. The applicant's representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-43? Let the record show there are seven people here in opposition. All those registered to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
If you want to speak, folks, come on up and get sworn in if you think you want to speak. Let's go ahead and get you sworn in. Doesn't mean you have to. Let's just get it done at one time.
Great. Thank you. And again, for the record, I'm Kevin Moore here on behalf of the applicant and owner for this application for rezoning. And what we're doing on this application is looking at the western half of the tract that was marked Planned Shopping Center, and what is proposed is a rezoning to RMA for a townhome community. And just to kind of give you another nod of where this is located, and then we'll get specific. On the screen right now, you see you have the aerial that shows, again, Hurt Road, just like we were showing you, the empty Target store that's next door. And then you have a separate tract, which is this 7.3 acres located just to the western portion and shares that same boundary, that now stands as a primarily a large asphalt old parking lot. And then there's a portion of it also that is partly grassed and so forth that's sitting there behind a fast-food establishment. What we're proposing is an RMA development, which initially was proposed for 58 townhomes, that has been reduced now to a total of 51 townhomes, which we think will really ignite the development activity and as well as the quality of development in an area that hasn't seen that in a very long time, like we just explained. What I want to do now is just turn to that site plan and go through some of the highlights, as well as show you the proposed elevation.
Turning now to the site plan. Again, here we have Hurt Road. To give you some context, Commissioner Porter just had spoken about that boundary. This is that shared boundary with the proposed climate-controlled self-storage, which we showed the 15 feet of buffer on this side, which combined with the 15 feet on the other side provides for a solid 30-foot buffer along that property line. Couple of things we want to show you as far as the dynamics of how this is proposed for the 51 units. First is it has two areas of access. There's one access point here at Hurt Road, and then one access point here on Floyd Road. You see this is labeled an access easement. That's because right here is a church. There's also been there for quite some time. This access easement provides that access to the church, number one. Number two, they have it by right according to easement rights that flow to that church. So this remains. But what we want to do is have a single point of access or entry to the proposed townhome community, which is here. This also allows the residents or future residents then to have actually two directions from which to exit and access, depending on where they're going and where they're coming from, which helps disperse traffic impact to both Floyd Road here and Hurt Road here. In addition, what you will see in this proposed community is nice areas of green yard, including community pavilions, another green linear park that's located here, mail kiosk and green area park here. What this does is, you'll see, for the most part, except for, except for these units, and these back up to where, which will now be a newly landscaped detention pond, back up or the rears are to a yard area of some sort that will be heavily landscaped and newly landscaped. If you recall, what this area is now is a large parking lot. So now, it will be transformed in terms of visually how it will appear, and all of that will be brand-new landscaping, grassed area that will make for very attractive homes, very attractive rear yards for all of the enjoyment of these residents, because it will be common area maintained by a mandatory homeowners' association. In addition, we didn't have it on the submitted plan. This has been slightly updated, and we'll provide that. But I just want to show you throughout, spread throughout this community now is an additional 26 parking spots outside of the driveway and garages. And those are interspersed from our land planner in various locations here, locations here, locations here, and again, locations here. So they're really dispersed throughout the community, which is important, so that they're used by those that are there. It's, and again, this is an updated plan that simply inserted where that parking would go for purposes of letting you know. We did think about it and just wanted to make sure it was in there and we could present that to you. Now I'm gonna show you what is the proposed elevation. Now I'm going to show you what is the proposed elevation.
This is the proposed elevation from, and you see that Venture Homes is the selected builder and developer for this, which these have been designed specifically for this location. You see it's a combination of brick and masonry-type materials that will be used. They have the emphasis on that. We think these are very attractive. Price points are projected to be in the high one-hundreds and low two-hundreds. We think that this will be ideal for this location. We think that this will be homeownership that will be injected into this area further. We think these look great and can prevent a long-term, it can provide for, you know, long-term maintenance, because they look great and they are of that nature. I wanted to add, one of the, as we're talking about these homes and who lives and who's going to buy these as homeowners, because these will be for-sale homes, one of the stipulations is not included in this stipulation letter dated July twenty-sixth, but I discussed over the lunch break with, with those that are, most of those that are in attendance here. Some of them left for lunch before they could grab me. But in talking with them, we have agreed to include within our covenants, because these will have a declaration of covenants, will be mandatory HOA. And one of those covenants, we've agreed, will include a rental limitation that no more than ten percent of the homes can be leased or rented at any single time. And that will be a covenant, and we've agreed by zoning condition to include that as one of our covenants. And I think that's very important to assure those folks that live, they sit primarily in the two age-restricted communities, that again, the intention here is not only for homeownership, we're going to see that through to make sure that that's the case, because we think that's important as well. In addition, we have included with those stipulations, a number of stipulations as it relates to the landscaping, a number of stipulations as it relates to providing for fencing and as well as to provide for all of the types of things that you see in a mandatory declaration of covenants type of community, including, this was important simply because it was brought up, and I want to highlight this, that the garages cannot be converted into living space, nor can they be used to store stuff. They have to be used to park cars, and that's something Venture Homes includes in its communities, because otherwise cars just hang out and they, it turns into an additional storage area. So that's one of the covenants that they believe in, so the cars for the owners are parked inside. And I thought that was important, not only because they raised it, because that's important from a Venture Homes standpoint, because for how they like for their communities to be presented. In addition, I just want to touch on one of the comments and issues, and we discussed that as it relates to traffic. You know, it seems to be, you can't propose any type of zoning where you can't talk about traffic, because it's all here and it's all encompassing across Cobb County. When looking at this particular project, you really look at the two projects together, I believe, in terms of overall traffic impact, because they're together today. The traffic impact is not one of a vacant Target store. The traffic impact is what could that vacant Target store be converted to today, which would be a large, you know, box retailer, probably of a, who knows who that would be and who, who would want to do that, that would produce the type of retail and commercial traffic that would come in and out of these same location spots all day again. That's the traffic that is today. So the comparison is not nothing versus what is proposed. It's the high level of intensity the commercial location would produce there versus what we're proposing, which is simply fifty-one new homes and a almost negligible traffic impact of a self-storage facility. So I think if you're looking for the traffic deal here, what we're proposing is the traffic deal, so a far less traffic impact than what is currently zoned for in terms of the conflicts of traffic, in terms of the amount of traffic and what would flow in and out of there, especially given that we're maintaining both access points and invigorating this area with what will be quality homes from Venture Homes. With that, we believe this is an excellent zoning application. It's one, maybe it's a little bit out of the ordinary in terms of taking and converting this type of area to townhomes, but it's also a way of doing it smartly in conjunction with another use, so that it all works together and it provides what we believe is an excellent example of what you can do if you sit down and really think about what something can be done, how it can be done, and how it can be done well, given the market and circumstances that this property finds itself in, just like Commissioner Porter said last time. The East-West Connector stole the thunder, which was fine. It was intended to, to a certain extent, just didn't realize it was going to steal it that far away. With that, we would certainly respectfully request your recommendation of approval to the Board of Commissioners with the July twenty-six, two thousand seventeen letter and my additional condition of the ten percent rental limitation be included as a covenant. Thank you.
Perfect. I mean, boy, the light went off and he quit talking. That doesn't happen often.
I try to do it right.
You did. Okay, thank you very much, Kevin. Okay, let's hear from the opposition at this time. Come on up, whoever wants to be first. We don't bite. Yeah, good. Just give us your name and tell us what you'd like us to know.
My name is Anita Green, and I'm a resident of Settlers Walk, so we're just to the right of the storage. So this is all new to us. I just have a few questions. You answered most of them. This is going to be a single-family development and not a condo development, right?
Well, it's for sale of units. I mean, this is not your time to ask us questions.
Oh, okay.
It's your time to state your case.
Okay.
We'll get into all, you just state what you want to know and we'll try to get your answers for you.
Okay, well, that was a question.
Okay, we'll see what we can do.
And then secondly, you talked about two entryways. So is that what it's going to be, two entryways? And third is, thirdly, what's the average standard lot size for a townhome? And that's it, I guess?
Okay, we'll try to cover that for you.
Okay.
Okay, all righty. Thank you, Anita, very much.
I'm Neil Zimmerman. I, excuse me, I live in the other SC condo community across the street Hurt Road. We're in Settlers Trail. Again, the same builder built our unit. Probably have a difference of opinion on the traffic impact of the residential units. At rush hour, the traffic going up and down Hurt Road is considerable. There's a left-hand turn lane into our unit. Since one of the access points into the residential area is on Hurt Road, we see in the rush hour timeframes, a considerable increase in that traffic. We're also thinking that for the access point coming onto Floyd Road, again, mostly in the rush hours, there is considerable traffic from Floyd Road heading down that chart towards the East-West Connector. And there are times when traffic is backed up at the light at the intersection of Floyd Road and the East Connector, about a hundred and fifty to two hundred yards worth of cars. It can take several iterations of traffic lights to get through that. So the traffic impact of the residential unit, in our opinion, should not be underestimated. We'd like that to be looked at a little bit harder.
Okay, thank you, Neil. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I'm Gail Olinov. I'm president by default at Settlers Trail. And traffic, we've lived there since, since the beginning, sixteen years. And that Target facility has been empty pretty much that whole time. So we have no objection to that, no traffic. But for instance, the other day I was coming east on Hurt Road and someone was turning into that access that they mentioned on Hurt Road. And traffic was backed way up till they got a chance to turn left in there, because the traffic was coming both ways. It's backed up so badly that if we want to go to dinner like five o'clock, six o'clock, when we're at Hurt Road and Floyd, we can't even get across Floyd Road, because the distance from Floyd to Ostel Road is very small. And it backs way up so that we have to sit through several lights till we can cross Floyd Road. So while we love the idea of something in there rather than a cement, I think it's way too many units for the area. They reduced it themselves from fifty-eight to fifty-one. And I think it has to be reduced further, because let's face it, there's probably going to be two cars per unit, one hundred sixteen vehicles, more to go onto Floyd, to go onto Hurt. And I think it's just going to be too much. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Gail. Anyone else?
Is this a chance to just have opposition?
If you, have you been sworn in? If you want to ask any questions, you need to be sworn in and then come to the podium. We have about five minutes left, so if you want to hurry, we can hear your comments.
Yes, I can.
Okay, and give us, give us your name.
Hi, my name is Reya Kim. I'm the general counsel.
I'm sorry, say that again.
My name is Reya, last name is Kim. I'm the general counsel for the commercial property located right next to it called Ostel Marketplace. Just wanted to have an inquiry about the clarification with, without doing the search, what we believe we have the easement for the right-of-way for one direction. We addressed the part about the church, but I just wanted a clarification of how that would work out, because we do have traffic congestion right now. I'm not opposing this by any means. I just wanted to know if we can find out more about the easement towards the, not the front, but towards where the church is, as it connects with the commercial property next door. That's it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Got about four minutes left. Yeah, come on up. Have you been sworn in?
Hello, I'm Marty Harding. I live at Settlers Walk. When he was talking about the townhouses coming onto Hurt Road and Floyd Road, on both sides of Hurt Road, in front of Settlers Walk and Settlers Trail, there is a bus stop. And when the bus stops there, it starts backing traffic up. And if we have people coming onto Hurt Road and the bus is there, it's going to be a nightmare. Right now, this morning, it took us a good ten, maybe fifteen minutes to get out of our neighborhood. In the morning, and it's six o'clock, it is bumper to bumper. You cannot move. And if you add a hundred seventy-five more cars, it's just going to be, you know, we're going to be stuck in our neighborhoods. We're not going to be able to get out. There's the light at Floyd and Hurt Road, and then you would go probably the length of this building before you would get to the exit for the townhouses to come. And again, if they're coming on or trying to turn left to go in there with the traffic buildup, you can't put another light there, so it's just going to be a bottleneck. It's going to, that whole intersection is just going to be one big bottleneck. So please consider that before you allow them to put this many units in there. Thank you.
Thank you, Marty. Anyone else? Got a couple of minutes left, anybody? Okay, not seeing and hearing any, we'll close the public comment portion. It is back to this group, District Four. This again will be Mr. Porter, so lead our discussion. Go on.
Thank you, Mike. I think I'll have Kevin come back up. Shoot you some of the questions that they asked and let you address them. Sure. Single-family versus condo? Okay. Under the RM eight zoning ordinance, the way we have, it permits, has a permitted use as condominiums. The way that we have done that for townhomes is that these are condominiums built in a townhome style. In other words, these don't have little individual townhome lots like you saw back in the seventies or eighties when we did townhomes. These are sold as individual units, like a condominium, meaning just the individual unit wall-to-wall and wall-to-wall are sold as an individual fee simple ownership-owned unit, like you would a condo. And then the rest of all the grounds and everything, the exterior is maintained by the homeowners' association. And that's just how we've done that. Otherwise, you're, you're in an FST or fee simple townhome category that requires lots. And, and then it just becomes, this is a real estate versus what real estate law like calls condos and fee simple versus what zoning calls condo and fee simple. And we just kind of married that up. So when somebody says it's a single-family, yes, these are for, these aren't detached, but it's townhomes that will be sold for sale to homeowners. Okay.
Is there fee simple or?
Yes, it's fee simple, yes.
Okay, we cannot take any comments from there unless you're at this podium. So let's, let's don't shout questions.
And the, and I've got the same list. If I miss something, that's okay. Also, as it relates to homeowners' association, this means it will have a mandatory homeowners' association. That's what we've included. So it has a mandatory homeowners' association, just like Settlers Walk and across the street. Those have mandatory homeowners' associations. You must pay your dues, you must be subject to it, and it has covenants and restrictions that will actually be very, very similar to the same ones they have, other than the age restriction. Very tight, tightly controlled homeowners' association with covenants and restrictions. The next issue was the access was the other question that she had. There's currently two points of access, one on Floyd Road and one on Hurt Road, and those will remain. We think that's important, because it disperses the traffic, number one, and number two, there's rights that the church, as well as the adjacent shopping center have to keep those open. So we, we think it's a good thing, actually. Those are the questions I had. And then I've also talked, spoken to Ms. Kim about the easement issue she asked about, which is really kind of outside what y'all get into. And, and we'll, we'll be, there has been discussion with others involved with this application on that end of it, and we'll, I'm going to get with her and make sure those are answered satisfactorily. Okay. And just one little thing I noticed on the map here, and it was asked about at one of our community meetings, and I haven't looked at it too close, up in the northwest corner, there's, you know, access to Ostel Road right now. And just probably something for you to discuss with Ms. Kim is, you know, keeping that access point open is one of the access points to the shopping center. Correct. That would be open. Okay. It just looked like we may just be taking a corner off of the driveway right now, so... I think that's the way mapping shows it. It's actually on the bottom side of where that connects. Okay, and that's very wrong case. But that's a good question. I think that would confuse somebody looking at this, especially Ms. Kim, just looking at that and seeing it looks like we're going to close that off. Yeah, okay. And you're not expecting the shopping center to have access to these other points that the church has access to? The Hurt Road and the Floyd Road? It depends. They have a, they do, they potentially have some easement rights to that, and we're going to, we're working with them to see how we can make that happen. But there's a couple of different ways that can happen without impacting us. Okay. Okay, that's good.
We want to be sure we're not, or at least attempting not, we don't want to limit access to the shopping center that's there, the farmer's market. And I'm sure Ms. Kim is concerned about that.
Correct. Neither do we.
Okay.
But so, we're not requesting any part of the zoning that would be taken from a Cobb County stance, that somehow you're approving eliminating access to the shopping center from any rights they have today. Okay. That's totally on us to. Yeah, I just noticed the site plan didn't show access down to those roads, and that's why I was asking. There's a note that says, that calls out the easement access, and we'll see how, that we need, that we know we have to work with them on. Okay. And I'll show her when we get done. I just haven't met her before. Okay, that's good. Now, one of the, I'll just say, one of the other concerns I had that I had discussed with your dad was the fact that there really needs to be a good-sized buffer between this project and the shopping center, and probably the other commercial uses, because we're pulling something out of commercial. And then if they want to redevelop at some point, they'd have to put in a buffer, and it's not quite fair to them. I think the burden ought to be on, on this with the self-storage, you know, kind of splitting the buffer half and half. Also, your father had talked about a certain wood fence. Do you have depictions of that? He's going to show you the picture of the fence. This is an up-close picture of a fence that Venture Homes is currently, has. He's gonna show you the picture of the fence. This is an up-close picture of a fence that Venture Homes is currently, has, has constructed on another one of its developments, in which we'd be proposing here as part of the privacy fence. To be included within our landscape plan. And what you can see is it's a solid wood privacy fence, but it's, it's attractive. It has some decorative design to it. And I, we just wanted to show that up, up-close picture of it, so you can see exactly what kind of decorative design they're employing. We think it looks great. I think it would be a, a real highlight for.
Where would that be, Kevin?
Around the perimeter.
Okay, all sides?
Yes, it's part of our landscape.
Okay, what type of landscaping would be in front of this? So to kind of soften the appeal, you know, we always, in fact, we like to put stuff that after five years, you don't even see the fence anymore.
Sure. Well, that's, we want it to be attractive to the other side of the fence, too.
Right.
But this is, uh, would, would involve a landscaping plan of evergreen bushes and trees, so you have height as well as coverage below. And these landscape buffers, just to kind of give you, which leads into my, to answer your, your first question, I kind of answered them in reverse order. But it leads, we've, we've looked at the, at the, the distances. We already talked about the, the lands, the effective landscape buffer that will be adjacent to the proposed self-storage. It actually ends up being about a thirty-two-foot effective landscape buffer in that location. And we tried to mirror that. What we're proposing against the shopping center side is another fifteen-foot landscape buffer, where we can also have an effective buffer with, uh, buffering against that, as well as setting those units back from, uh, from there, uh, from the adjoining property line. So you have, it's about sixty-one feet from the build, from the townhome buildings to that northern property line. Let me show you where that is and kind of show you why it's oriented that way, to answer that question a little better.
And where, where we're referencing is, this is that shared line, uh, property line with the shopping center to the, to the north.
Right.
And what we've, uh, what we've proposed here is a, a minimum fifteen-foot landscape buffer along this entire side that will include the fence that we just showed you. And what I'm talking about is you've got from this property line to the fronts of these homes is sixty-one feet. But I think it's important, too, to note that these are the fronts of the homes, where people, you know, these are the driveways, as this, in this road that comes, uh, that, you know, the road interior comes around, these are the driveways. What you've got back here is really where they live, not in the front, in the back. So we feel like that with that screening, what it provides is really a landscaped, beautifully landscaped roadway to come in and visit and come home. And then you look out the back into a, you get on your back deck and look into a beautiful landscaped area out there as well. But we feel that will really provide for a great feeling of, of residential feel, but you will be in a location that, you know, that has other uses. So that's where, um, you know, we believe we've provided that type of buffer.
Okay, now, how far off the property line would the fence be set under this proposal?
Uh, they would probably put the fence, uh, what they're proposing here would be, you know, the fence would be just off the property line. Usually they try to set that back six inches to a foot tops, just off the property line. Draw the, draw the fence and then install your landscaping on.
Yeah, that wouldn't allow any landscaping in front of that fence to mitigate looking at a fence on the shopping center side, or the street side, or the church side, or any of those places where it may go.
I mean, you could. It's just, it's just a matter of, you know, wherever the fence goes, whatsoever on the other side of the fence, you're essentially giving them that property. So they, we usually like to set those fences at or near the property line and then landscape from there. But there's certainly allowances here where you can landscape on the other side as well.
I think with the landscaping, a wrought iron fence would make more sense in this case. Yeah, to me, anyway, because this fence is gonna become very unattractive over time.
It's more expensive.
Even though it's much better than your normal privacy fence that we see proposed, I just don't, I don't think it would be attractive sitting right up there.
The powder-coated aluminum, you know, wrought iron fence is, is fine as well. This is just a more expensive one. We're happy to put in a less expensive one.
Sure.
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, while we're on this, Kevin, um, you just talked about the fence along that northern border there.
Yes.
I'm, I'm a little confused about that access road that sort of goes north-south, not quite north-south, but pretty much into the shopping center. Where, where is, you show landscaping on the western edge of that, but the fence is on somewhere removed from that, twenty or thirty feet, right?
And I believe, are you talking about?
I'm talking about that stretch.
This stretch here?
Yeah.
Yes, we're showing that as, it, it's just, this particular area, it comes, there's an access that comes in right through here.
So there, where is the fence?
So depending on how that results, it'll either be a fence located here, or a fence located here.
Well, if there's a fence on the left side of that, on the west side of that, then there has to be an opening at either end to let traffic.
Right, there'd be an opening here and an opening here.
Okay. Okay. I'm, I'm, I'm still confused about that. I know now people come off of Floyd on that access road and turn left to go up toward the shopping center.
Correct, that's right in here.
Will they still be able to do that?
Yes, if that's what we arrange and work out.
Because it's not really shown clearly to my satisfaction, anyway, on this plan.
Yes, because we can't take that, we can't unilaterally take that away.
Okay, well, then it should have been shown here, and I think that was true.
Yeah, I was just trying to understand.
Yeah, we just want to be clear about that.
Sure. But whether it's an access or not on that western side, it's just, it's part of this tract. And so we're gonna have to, that's why it's part of the zoning, because it's part of the tract. But it's not, whether it's in or it's out, will depend on what we work with the shopping center on.
Just don't color it green, because it looks like you're gonna plant grass there.
Sure, I get you.
While I've got the floor here, if you don't mind, Gaunt, and I may be stepping on your toes here, but, um, what's the square feet of these units?
Uh, these homes range from a minimum of eighteen-hundred square feet up to twenty-four-hundred and greater.
Okay, and then what is the width on the street?
Uh, these are twenty-six-foot wide, um, homes.
Okay, and for those who don't know in the audience, that's good. That's very good. I've seen them as, as, you know, fourteen, sixteen, eighteen feet wide. Twenty-four, twenty-six, twenty-eight feet wide is excellent for this type of construction. So I wanted to clarify that. We talked about the facades, and we saw what the buildings would look like. That looks pretty nice. What about the other sides? What, it, these are clustered together, you know, four, five, six to a cluster.
Correct.
Is it four-sided? Can I call it four-sided architecture?
You could call it three-sided. On the, on each end cap.
Are three-sided?
You'll see how that, the brick and what, whatnot would come on around, uh, along the sides. When you get to the rears, that's where you have, um, because these will have decks.
Most of these don't face out, so I know it's not that important.
It all faces interior, but on that rear side, the issue is you, if you put, I don't know what you're defining four-sided architecture, but it pulls around with the roof line in the back and so forth. But it won't pull around with additional brick and, or stone along the, the rears, because that's underneath the deck. It won't be seen, or it, it, it's kind of wasted, to be honest with you.
Yeah, I understand that. And I know that most of the rears don't face, they all face inward.
That's correct.
And so that, it's not as important. However, this has come up before, and I've seen other developers, not this one, use hardy plank on all the other sides. And there's some areas where it just looks cheap.
Sure.
And I want to be sure we don't get to that point here.
We can certainly say that the end, the ends will continue with the architecture to have a brick or stone, or whatever it's gonna be, whatever that base, um, brick or stone is, will also continue around on the ends of each built, townhome building.
Length of the driveway, any idea? Twenty-two, twenty-four feet? You do have some added parking, which is good, scattered around the area. That's good.
Yes, these are, it looks like they're twenty-two-foot driveways.
Okay.
I'm on, I think, I can't see it on the colored version, but I'm thinking that's what it is.
Okay, so not, not twenty feet where cars stick out over the dri, over the sidewalk?
These are twenty-two feet.
Okay, that's good, too. We, we had people who stood up here a moment ago and talked about adding fifty cars, adding, one lady even said a hundred and seventy-five cars. I'm not asking you to be a DOT engineer. We can get them to come up here, but if we need to. We're talking fifty-one units. What would be your estimate of the number of cars? And, and I, it's a loaded question, because we all know it's about a hundred cars.
It is. The, this would be, um.
It's certainly not a hundred and seventy-five.
We, in terms of the number of cars, we would not anticipate, you would not anticipate that every home would have two cars. Because you would, there would be a certain, fairly large, there would be a certain percentage, and not an insignificant percentage, but there'd be, there's a certain percentage, we believe these would be, um, uh, could be young professionals, single, that would, would buy this as a home, looking to buy a home and to be in a great location. And so they would only have one car. So there's gonna be a percentage that's gonna be one car. You know, one point seven-five would be the factor I would probably use for that. So it's gonna be close to that, maybe what, you know, seventy-five to a hundred cars would be. And I'm not, a traffic engineer could come up here, but I would.
No, we're not gonna hold you to that. I just.
I just know this type of development, who it appeals to and what the target market is, so.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, no, that's fine. I had a couple of quick questions over there, anyway. With reference to the detention, detention pond fencing, since that sits right up on Hurt Road.
Yes.
The stiff letter says chain link, but I would hope you'd be amenable to wrought iron style aluminum.
Yes, we'd be fine with that. It's, it's gotta be landscaped and subject to whatever, you know, from a stormwater standpoint. If they, if they don't have a problem with it, we do not have a problem with, with that aspect.
And that's why I walked out there and asked to make sure they didn't have a problem. But that certainly will be a lot more appealing than chain link, which is out there right now, which looks very unattractive.
No, we want to, the chain link was a black, you know, coated chain link, so it hides, it just kind of disappears when you fully landscape. Because that detention pond, we're gonna have to be, uh, it's, it's going to need some work. It hasn't had any work. And it needs to be, it's not functioning properly, uh, from what I gather in talking with the residents. Uh, it needs to function properly, so, yeah.
And I, I think the runoff will be a whole lot less with the townhome community, which is only gonna be probably forty-five percent impervious instead of the hundred percent of impervious that's there right now, meaning.
That's correct.
Impervious means the water can't soak through. So there's no green. Now you're gonna have about fifty-five percent green, probably.
That's correct.
So, somewhere in that neighborhood, anyway. Okay, I don't have any more questions, I don't think.
If.
Oh, I do have a couple.
Yes.
The site plan you showed today, do you have a copy to leave with the clerk?
I do. It's dated July twenty-eighth.
Right, I saw that up here.
The only change is the parking.
Right, which I had noted didn't have any before, so.
Correct.
And also the elevations you have.
I do have a copy.
A copy to leave those as well, because we don't have those.
I do.
And those are my other couple of questions. Okay, you can have a seat, Kevin.
Can I add one thing?
Sure.
Since you were asking about the detention, just want to make sure the, the dedication of the right-of-way, again, as it applied to the self-storage also applies here, because that's actually where the ball is, so.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and that was revised comments for this case as well, I believe. They aren't paying attention, but they'll get it corrected if it's not. It was revised comments, Ashley and Amy, your revised comments were for forty-three as well on the right-of-way? Okay, just wanted to make sure. I thought they were, but, okay. Well, no, the one thing we haven't really discussed is the density. Because, you know, several people have, so, several people have that. You want me to, I just, they're asking for seven, essentially, a little over seven. You know, typically in a community activity center, the, the highest one allows five. So we, so now this is a little bit different because of the location, the way it's sitting. It is on, on there. Any, any input before I make a motion, so I can just do a clean motion? Well, I want to see what, before we have to start changing the motion, let's figure out the density.
You know, just to throw it out there, the density, to be honest with you, doesn't bother me that much because of, it's currently zoned commercial, and you got all the commercial around it. So with all the stipulations that you've managed to drag out of that poor man, and all the, the landscaping and the fencing all the way around it, the density didn't really bother me, given the location of, you know, it could be a shopping center we're talking about.
That's right.
And if we had a lot more cars, we wouldn't have all the other things that we're getting, so. But I'd leave that up to you.
Okay.
Yeah, and I just want to echo that, that it could be a shopping center there, and there could be a Target store next door, but it's not.
It was.
There was, that's right, but they're not anymore.
Right, but it could be a bar or a fitness club or something like that.
Normally, I would say reduce the density a little bit, but, um, whatever you think.
Okay. Any more input on that?
I'm fine with the density. I don't have a problem with it. If you did reduce the density, say, to five or six, it's not gonna make that much difference on the traffic at all.
Okay.
I, I'd go for it.
Okay. Okay, well then, you know, it's, it's a little higher than we normally allow in CAC. I think I'm gonna look at six units an acre, which is kind of splitting the difference between five and seven, which is forty-four units. Yeah, so I think that's, there's a. And I'm gonna make a motion regarding Z forty-three to recommend deletion to RA six, uh, subject to all the following. All staff comments and recommendations not otherwise in conflict, including zoning, fire, planning, water, sewer, stormwater management, and transportation comments. All stipulations in John Moore's letter dated July twenty-six, two thousand seventeen, not otherwise in conflict with, with staff recommendations or stipulations stated herein. Uh, site. Well, we're gonna have a new site plan because it's gonna reduce the unit, so we'll say site plan to be approved by the district commissioner. Maximum of forty-four units, which is six-point-oh-two units breaker. Elevation shown in the hearing today. Minimum. And we'll just add any other elevations to be approved by the district commissioner, in case they come with something else. Minimum fifteen-foot landscape buffer on the eastern property line. This is in addition to any buffer required on the adjoining property, which of course, we just did at fifteen feet as well. On the northern, western property lines, I'm gonna ask for a thirty-foot buffer. Because I think those commercial properties need to be protected from the residential complaining that there's too much noise, et cetera, et cetera. If the commercial were going in there, I believe they'd have to put in a thirty-foot buffer if they were coming after the residential. All fencing to be wrought, wrought iron style, aluminum fencing, powder-coated. Unless other fencing is approved by the district commissioner. Detention fencing to be wrought iron as well, aluminum, uh, style. All units to have a minimum of a two-car garage. Garages not to be converted to other uses. Garages to be used primarily for the parking of vehicles, with only incidental storage that does not interfere with the parking of two vehicles in the garage. The driveways in front of the garages to be a minimum of twenty-two feet in length. The landscape and buffer plan, uh, subject to the approval of the county arbors and district commissioner. No more than ten percent of the units to be rental. This is to be included in the covenants. Guest parking to be at a ratio of one-half space per unit, to be provided on the site plan. A district commissioner may approve minor modifications, except for those that increase the density of a residential project or the overall square footage of a non-residential product, project. Cause a reduction in the size of an approved buffer. Cause a relocation of a structure closer to the property line of an adjacent property that is zoned the same or more restrictive in its zoning. Increase the height of the building that, that is adjacent to a property that is zoned the same or more restrictive in its designated zoning. Change an access location to a different roadway. Change that is in conflict with an express stipulation or condition of zoning. Or anything that would require a variance or violates Cobb County ordinance. And I think we could put this on. Nah, I guess not. We have people here, so, so that's my motion. Nah, I guess not. We have people here, so, so that's my motion.
Can we have motion second for discussion?
I just wanna make sure I understand, I, I understand that that access road, if you come in off of Floyd Road and then you turn left to go more or less north in the shopping center, that access road right of way is to be negotiated, right? Um, depending on how, and, and assuming it's there, I would assume the thirty-foot buffer is to the east side of that.
Yes, that would be a good point. If, if we do add an access road, that buffer would be east of that access.
Yes.
That way, the buffer's doing something.
Right, okay.
Good point, good catch. So I'll amend the motion to say that.
Okay, anyone else? Can we have motion, we have a second, we have an amended motion, we have a second. Any further discussion, call for the vote? Okay, so that is approved, five-zero. Thank you, Kevin, very much. Mr. Peterson.
Rezoning case Z forty-six, CSP Development LLC. Request rezoning from R thirty to R fifteen for the purpose of single-family residential in land lots one seventy-six and one seventy-seven of the sixteenth district. The property is located on the west side of Wesley Chapel Road, on the south side of Sandy Plains Road, and at the northwest terminus of Running Fox Drive. Is present, is there anyone here opposed?
Folks, you cannot have a discussion in the chamber, we're televised, so if y'all would take it outside, I'd appreciate it. Thank you very much. I'm sorry, John, go ahead now.
Wait, is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z forty-six? Please raise your hands.
Z forty-six, anybody one?
All right, let, let the record show there's one person opposed. All those wishing to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
I think I put in a request for extra pay for Kevin today.
Thank you. Need whatever help I can get.
Yeah, extra ration of grog. Combat duty, yes. When have you ready, sir?
Thanks, Dave. Thank you again, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I'm Kevin Moore here on behalf of the owner and applicant in this application for rezoning, uh, CSP Development, uh, which stands for Cotton States Properties. If you're familiar with Cotton States Properties or have been around, um, or lived in a Cotton States Properties home or development, uh, they have been, again, they've developed in Cobb County and based out of Cobb County for over thirty years, and have been very successful and built a lot of very successful developments and homes, and, uh, have evolved over the years, but have always remained true to being a, a great home builder and developer, uh, in Cobb County. But just to let you know who that CSP is. This is an eight-point-nine-two acre tract that's located on Wesley Chapel Road, uh, right at its intersection with Sandy Plains. Uh, you may also recognize it as being the piece of property across the street from Mayberry Park, uh, which is how I call it. Um, but it's, uh, primarily located on Wesley Chapel Road, and we're seeking rezoning from R thirty to R fifteen. I think this is a great visual, uh, for this particular area. Uh, a lot of times you don't see R thirty going all the way down to R fifteen as a proposal. But when you look at this whole area, kinda like it didn't work very well earlier, but perhaps it'll have better traction now. When you look at this whole area, this is a section of East Cobb, uh, that is really dominated by two categories, R twenty and R fifteen. Uh, this particular property is zoned R thirty, as is Mayberry Park. That's where the R thirty comes from, because it's, has been part of that for a very long time. And in fact, this was Mayberry property. This is where even currently, um, the old Mayberry home sits on this property, and we'll touch on that here in a minute. Uh, but the, uh, overall predominant category is R fifteen and R twenty, especially on Wesley Chapel. Even just past this, away from the intersection, uh, is R fifteen subdivision that was actually built in, as a Cotton States Properties, uh, development, uh, that was built right off of, uh, of Wesley Chapel. And that's R fifteen. See, there's just tons of R twenty and R fifteen subdivisions, uh, that are well done in, in, in this particular area. And that's what's being proposed here. This is a smaller tract, uh, for R fifteen, uh, for a maximum of eighteen homes. Uh, but we believe that given what we're working with here and given what, uh, we have, uh, a tremendous amount of, uh, road frontage along Wesley Chapel and how we're gonna try to put this together, we believe R fifteen is warranted simply, more importantly, because of what we're providing in terms of stipulations and conditions, in terms of, uh, working with our adjoining neighbors. And I'm gonna turn to the site plan, I can go through some of that with you. Now, we're gonna kinda turn this back around, cause it's easier, but this is actually Wesley Chapel Road. It was straight up and down before, but this is Wesley Chapel Road here in Sandy Plains. This particular R thirty piece is not included, it's not part of the property. Uh, this R thirty over here is, uh, Mayberry Park. Uh, we have, uh, this is the R fifteen on Wesley Chapel Road, and as you continue, it gets to be more R fifteen down Wesley Chapel Road, and R twenty, uh, that's adjacent to us here. Uh, you can see we proposed a maximum of eighteen homes, uh, as part of that. Uh, the, uh, primary thing I wanna show you on this, uh, site plan, uh, it's hard to see unless you really look at it, but you'll see this, what we've carved out along our entire boundary, uh, on this side down on Wesley Chapel, uh, is a dedicated pedestrian access. Uh, and you may ask, who, well, who, who and for what? Well, if you'll look to, uh, to our west, this is, uh, Running Fox Drive, and it kinda dead-ends into right beside our property here. Uh, and you have, uh, the, uh, residents that live here along Fox Creek Court and others, uh, in this particular area have used, they've kinda come to the end of Running Fox Drive and then just walk right through here to get to Wesley Chapel Road and to the park and use the sidewalks and so forth. Kinda natural, uh, but it's actually part of this property. Uh, what we wanted to do is keep that. That, kinda the, it's one of those things, sometimes you just wanna be neighborly. And in this instance, you have a great number of t, of people who are used to using that. I've even heard from one of them, they use their golf cart to drive up that little path that's there. And we just wanna formalize that as part of our zoning plan, that it would be a dedicated pedestrian access easement, uh, to, uh, that would be in this location, um, so that that access remains and then, and they're not losing what they, you know, kind of have gotten used to using, uh, from that standpoint. Uh, we have been working with these neighbors, in particular Mr. Gill, Charles Gill, who lives here, uh, to, uh, uh, work with him on several issues, and he's been instrumental in, uh, alerting us to that pedestrian access easement and the importance of that, which was, been good from our standpoint. In addition, uh, located right here, uh, is the, uh, somebody, the old Mayberry home. One of the stipulations here, and we have had already, um, brief prior discussions with, uh, Cobb County Parks and Recreation, is to have that, uh, ho, home moved and relocated, uh, preferably across the street. Uh, we think that would be ideal. Uh, I think, we think Mayberry Park needs it. It would be great to have that there and so that it can be permanently preserved, uh, act as a part of that park and what it can offer and what it can offer to the public and the, and, and for a whole host of reasons. And we have offered to cooperate with Cobb Parks to do that and to make sure that can happen and work with them to that end. The, um, uh, and that's included in our stipulation letter, and we think that's awfully important. Uh, part of this, uh, again, uh, this particular piece of property is intimately involved, uh, with, uh, because of that, with Mayberry Park, and as you can see, we're trying to make that adjustments from a land plan standpoint, so that, um, others have the same access that they've enjoyed before, uh, and that our residents will enjoy in the future. Uh, lastly, Mr. Tyler's just gonna, uh, help me here with a cup, with one visual. Uh, the proposed homes, uh, for, uh, this, uh, application for this new community of eighteen homes. Uh, these are proposed elevations, uh, that are part of our stipulation letter, uh, and are representative of the homes that, and these are actually Cotton States plans, so this is what these are, uh, of what they would be building here, and you can see the various elevations, uh, and representative samples as he flips through. You can just flip through them, since they, they look like the houses they're used to seeing in this particular area of the county. Uh, but you can see the great level of detail, architectural style, and size of the homes, so that those in the area can be com, comfortable knowing this will be these homes, uh, being built and this location, so they can be comfortable with the, uh, both the size and the compatibility and consistency in terms of value and price point. Uh, with that, we do have a stipulation letter dated July twenty-six. Uh, it contains all of the stipulations I discussed, um, uh, with you. Uh, we are proposing, uh, that, um, this be included with, as part of any recommendation or ultimate approval, and it includes the site plan specifics, uh, of the pedestrian access. Uh, with that, uh, we would, uh, recommend and, uh, that you follow your planning and zoning staff's recommendation for approval, uh, and recommend approval to the board of commissioners of this proposed rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Let's hear from the opposition. Come on up.
My name is Ben Klein. Not so much opposition as a, uh, really a request. Uh, that whole property, the high site is Wesley Chapel. If you have the site plan, uh, I happen to be.
Let him give you a microphone there, uh, Mr. Klein, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. I happen to have this pro, piece of property here. It's about three hundred and ninety-five feet, which borders on, which borders on, uh, the new development that we're talking about. The concern is that this whole property is high on this end. I am hoping that whoever is supervising that development will be very aware of that, cause that whole property runs off, and if it's not done carefully, we're gonna get inundated. It's more during construction than once it is developed. The other comment that I have is, there's been a lot of discussion on buffers. That property at the moment, down at this end is woods, down at this end is woods. What's in the middle is, uh, a, a, a horse pasture.
Yep.
That was not supervised in any way, shape, or form when it was developed the last time. Uh, I, when I spoke to the developer, he was talking about, I think, forty-foot buffer between the home and the property line. I don't know whether anything can be done to increase vegetation, cause we have none. It is basically pasture. So, those are my two requests. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Klein. Okay, just for the record, anyone else wishing to speak to Z forty-six? Okay, not seeing any, we'll close this portion of the, uh, comment, uh, segment, and this is in District Three. Judy, that's yours. You wanna lead our discussion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This, um, is a track of land that's, like you said, uh, Kevin said, it's been in the Mayberry family for years and years, and the park is across the road, and the old home place is on the Mayberry track. Uh, the first thought when I saw it was, uh, R twenty would be the logical, what we normally see, um, in a step down. The staff has recommended R fifteen. And I think one of the reasons that the R fifteen, uh, came about was because of concessions that the applicant did make. He is taking ten feet off the front and adding it to the back, so that there's forty-foot setbacks, which would be equal to what a R thirty setback would be in not an R twenty or R fifteen. So, um, I like that part of it. I like the houses. And I like that they're gonna try to work with the county, uh, the commissioners, board of commissioners, about moving the, uh, home place and perhaps, uh, putting it over on the park property or some other, but working with, the developer's gonna work with the board of commissioners. So, um, I, I wanna call Dave Braden up. There was some concern about some drainage issues, and I wanted to address that.
Yes, ma'am, Dave Braden with the Stormwater Management Division.
Dave, would you show us where you've had some, there was some concern, I think, maybe like two lots down, where there might have been some, uh, water issues.
Oh, previously, yes.
I think that would have been the.
Let me get Tim to zoom out a little bit.
Zoning in twenty fifteen, I think.
There we go. Right there, yeah. There's a, it actually shows up as two tracks right now. It was originally one, one parcel. I believe they came in to try and do four or five lots in there, which, what, did not, uh, fly with planning commission or the, or the B O C.
Right.
Um, or stormwater management either. And they wound up doing a lot split, which they can do. And it could, because it met the underlying zoning. And you'll see the lower, the lower lot, almost all that lot drains back through into, um, actually an individual's lot. You can see that, yeah, right. You got it? Yeah. Yeah, right there, that draw. Um, most of that lot naturally drained through, um, uh, that Running Fox Drive, uh, residential property, which did not have hardly any conveyance through there whatsoever.
Mm-huh.
And we had to work with the builder on that lot to get all of that roof area and all the improvements on that lot to drain to Wesley Chapel. They're still in the process, the house is done, but they're still in the process of doing the final, um, tweaks to get all of that roof area to go to the street. So, uh, we have addressed that.
You have addressed that. And so you don't see any problem with this, of detaining the water on this?
No, well, this is, this is in a different basin altogether, to the north.
Okay.
And, uh, to that point, there, you'll see the two draws that leave this property, and, um, if you can, if you, one right there and then one to the north end. Uh, in the site plan, you'll see that there's two separate detention ponds that they're putting in to catch the water at both of those low points. And, uh, um, something good in this case is that there's already existing drainage easements through, uh, that Rain Tree Forest subdivision to carry that water through the site. So, did work out in this case, which is not all, not always the case.
Okay, but we are addressing it now.
Yes.
I think, all right, thank you, Dave. Um, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Dave, can you point out on this, um, map where, um, Mr. Klein's property is?
Yes, he is that, I'm, I'm pretty sure it's that triangle, triangle piece at the end of the cul-de-sac. That's right here. And about the middle, middle part of the site drains across that property line to him. As, during plan review, because of the way they've got the single road down through the middle, there'll be a drainage easement along that property line to take that water and carry it to the two detention ponds. So he'll have a significant reduction in the, and maybe all of that area will be gone, but at least a significant reduction of drainage area coming across that property line for him, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Dave.
But there will, and there will be no concentrated release on his property, so that's.
So he's not gonna incur, he's gonna get better with the, the two detention ponds. Okay, thank you. Um, I don't have any further questions unless anyone else.
Now, go ahead.
I, I just, I think the, um, the trade-off to go to R fifteen is, is perfect. And, and when I look at the density, it's really sort of halfway between R fifteen and R twenty anyway.
Two units.
At two units an acre, which fits in perfectly with the, you know, the blend of R twenty and R fifteen all over the place. So, I just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you.
I just hope they take the old wagon with the home. I did get out and walk around and, and saw that beautiful old turn-of-the-century wagon right behind the house. I'll be sure they get that as well. That was my only comment.
It, it was amazing.
Okay, good, excellent.
All right, let me make a motion then. Um, I would like to make a motion that we approve this, um, as presented, subject to the letter, uh, from Kevin Moore dated July the twenty-sixth, twenty-seventeen, subject to all staff comments and recommendations were not in conflict.
Can we have a second from Thea? Any further discussion, comments? Okay, call for the vote.
And I'm just wondering if we could put this on the consent agenda. I think we addressed Mr. Klein's problems, so.
Well, we can add it, and if he, if he wants to speak further, they can pull it.
I'm gonna, uh, recommend that we put it on the consent agenda.
Okay, second, okay with that?
Yes.
So have a motion, we have a second, add it to the consent agenda for the B O C, call for the vote. Okay, so that's approved five-zero. Thank you, Kevin. Okay, Mr. Peterson?
We'll be sure to get the wagon.
That was pretty cool.
If you don't want it, I'll come get it.
It was pretty cool.
Put it in my front yard.
Okay, moving into land use permits, LDP 13. Esther J. Kim and Sung Min Brian Ryu request a land use permit for the purpose of seven chickens and landlord 329 of the 16th District. The property is located on the east side of Wesley Chapel Road, south of Beacon Street. Is the applicant present? The director of the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LDP 13? The director says one person opposed. All those who are interested, address the board, please come forth to be sworn in.
Thank you for your patience.
Yeah, thanks for having me.
Yeah, give us your name and tell us what you'd like us to know.
Okay. My name is Brian Rue, and I want to thank you guys for this opportunity this afternoon. Our family resides at 3746 Wesley Chapel Road. And we are applying to keep backyard chickens and hope that this planning commission will make a strong recommendation to approve our application to the Board of Commissioners. There's a lot of myths and misconceptions around backyard chickens. And I believe many arise from people's perceptions of large-scale farms or poultry factories. I know I once held to these beliefs. And what we have in our backyard is not that. Over the years, I've met other backyard chicken owners who live in parts of Atlanta where there are ordinances that allow for backyard chickens. I work as a teacher in Decatur, and I knew two coworkers with backyard flocks. And they helped to spearhead an initiative at our school property for educational purposes. As our family's interests grew, we joined an ex-CSA with Suburban Fresh Farm here in Marietta. They're no longer in business, but it was great just getting fresh eggs from a local farm. As we interacted more with other chicken owners and the chickens themselves, our desire to have our own flock grew. And as first-time homeowners, we regret to say that we were not aware that a land use permit was needed, as none of our other chicken owner friends mentioned their need to apply for one. Once Officer Dwayne Hepler made us aware of the need, we quickly began the process, and we currently have six chickens. Their names are Wonder Chick, Cappy, Flash Chick, Super Chick, Pecko, and Bat Chick. Our son Manny, who loves superheroes, named them all. I built both the run and the coop with the help of my family. And our hens lay three to five eggs per day. And in essence, our chickens provide breakfast for us. They also add to our gardening efforts as their droppings are high in nitrogen. And when added to a compost pile, make great free fertilizers. They have covered, they have a covered and protected run that is approximately 400 square feet, made up of a combination of steel fencing, hardware cloth, welded wire, and an air protection as well. And their coop is securely locked every night. Their coop and borders of the run are over 30 feet away from any property line. Two main misconceptions that I saw in the staff recommendations and notes that I'd like to address from the get-go are, one, the impact on property values, and two, chickens being a health and safety issue. There's very little evidence that property values are adversely affected as a result of a neighbor having backyard chickens. The data is simply not there. A Forest Magazine issue states that seven out of the 10 most desirable cities allow for backyard chickens. Ryan Brachier, an executive with Georgia Association of Realtors, states regarding effects on property values that, quote, "Such data is not tracked on either the state or national level, to my knowledge, nor could I find any such data after doing some research on the subject," end quote. Jen Bowman, an associate with Keller Williams, said, quote, "I don't think backyard chickens would decrease property values. That certainly isn't something an appraiser takes into consideration. I've had people not buy homes because of large barking dogs in neighboring yards. Chickens are pretty quiet. Backyard chickens are allowed in the city of Decatur, where rules are pretty strict," end quote. If there is substantiated evidence that backyard chickens have negatively impacted property value, I personally would love to see that data. All I hear and see is home valuation increasing in places like Dunwoodie, Roswell, Johns Creek, Sandy Springs, and Decatur, towns that have sensible ordinances around keeping backyard flocks. The second issue that was raised in the staff notes is regarding health and safety. Small backyard flocks virtually carry no diseases. Diseases are found in large-scale chicken factories. The Fairfax County of Virginia, where my wife's family is from, an affluent, highly educated county, very similar to where we live, states on their government website, quote, "Backyard-raised chickens are usually very healthy and free of diseases. A key to good health is a clean and well-kept environment." And we agree with that from experience. We change their water daily. We don't leave feed out. We routinely clean their coop and their run because management is key, not the pets themselves. The fact is that chickens actually contribute to the health and safety of our property because chickens eat insects such as ticks. Think Lyme disease. Or mosquitoes. Think any number of mosquito-borne diseases. Chickens themselves do not smell. Any possible odor would come from their droppings, which we routinely clean up. But five hens generate less manure than one medium-sized dog. And as a gardener, unlike the feces of dogs and cats, which carry pathogens and cannot be composted and go straight into the landfill, chicken droppings help to make free fertilizers for our garden. Chickens do not attract predators to the area. Predators are already there. Similarly, local prey such as wild rabbits, squirrels, chipmunks, small birds, and even domestic cats and small dogs are already there. But there is no mandate to ban them or provide such government oversight over them. And the real question we should be asking, I believe, is, is the homeowner a responsible and responsive caretaker? Is his or her backyard flock protected and secured? I hope that my sharing with this commission this morning demonstrates a resounding yes to these questions. So in many ways, I agree with former Commissioner Chrissy Trembetti, who stated during the planning commission meeting of October 4, 2016, that she was not worried about noise with another applicant's case, and we can attest to that. Our neighbor Keith, who's going to present in a bit, he was over on Sunday, and we heard virtually no sounds from our chickens. Or worried, she said, about chickens being a health and safety issue. And I agree with her on that. I hope you feel at ease, and we're hopeful that our application will go through successfully. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Let's hear from our next speaker, please.
As you can tell, this is an angry opposition. My name is Keith Romick. I've met a couple of the, I met, I think, Mr. Peterson and Mr. Terry by email, because I was a little bit taken aback by receiving such late notice of what was going on. And I think there's some reasons for that. I also want to address really three things, and none of it has to do with much of what Brian talked about, because I don't disagree with much of what he said at all about chickens. There've been lots of debate, good or bad chickens. Frankly, I've raised chickens in my backyard in a different location. The problem is, in this particular location, it's just not appropriate to have flocks of chickens. And the reason I'm saying that, and I think you just had a presenter come in and show you a very[1177.82][1178.85]intense, I would call it intense cluster based upon, you know, our one-acre lots on the other end of Wesley Chapel. And what's happening on Wesley Chapel is we're getting more and more upscale development. And I came across a statistic I want to share with you all. And may I just put this on here? It's kind of cool, by the way. Well, I wanted to show you, because this is kind of the. Thanks. Looks a little small there, doesn't it? What I wanted to try to show is, we, you know, the yellow marks the Wesley Chapel Estates. The white marks, oh, there's a gray one there, which is kind of a free agent. And then the white is the Wesley Hills. Wesley Hills doesn't have any covenants in place. I'm not sure they ever did have them. If they did, they expired. Wesley Chapel, on the other hand, has significant covenants in place. And the impact upon these particular chickens, you can see where I indicated the coop on our properties, I got to admit, is not great. I've never known the chickens were there. They're not allowed. The problem is this, though, I want to show you, in addition, well, first, let me go over the statistic at the bottom. Can you show that? I'm sure in Cobb County, there are places where chickens are welcome, and they would be good. But I knew anecdotally, and I asked my Realtor to pull some numbers. And what I asked him to do is pull the number of houses that were sold in Lassiter and in Pope School Service areas over the past year. And under 100, 700,000, there were 879 homes that were sold. Between 700 and 900,000, I left the numbers off above that because they're so small, there were only 46. Now, here's my point. The chicken debate's been going on for a long time. You know, probably 50-50 split as to whether it's a problem or not for certain people. When you're getting into a zone where only 46 people were in the market to buy houses in both those very large service areas versus the 879 and below that, you have to take into consideration pragmatism, which is whether you believe that chickens are good or bad is really irrelevant. Because if half of the potential buyers out there are going to walk away from your property because there are chickens living on the other side of the fence, that's a problem for the landowners. And I wanted to show you a second markup. This is basically looking at the area around Wesley Hills. And of course, across the street, Springwood also does not have covenants. But because of the quality of the schools, top-ranked in the state, people come in with a lot more buying power because they're not having to send their kids to private schools, who normally perhaps would send their kids to private schools. So you have down in the corner, it might be one of those RSLs we were talking about earlier. You have new townhomes going in for 500,000-plus. You have Rosemary Place, actually, there are 800,000-plus, you know, properties there that are with restrictive covenants. On the other side, Lake Cochran, you have 900,000-plus valued properties. Beacon Hills, probably in the 400 to 500 range, also with restrictive covenants. Wesley Chapel, I put 700-plus, that might be hopeful, but that's where we're hoping to be. We are four houses. I don't know about Bluff View. There's new homes going in, another, you know, 100 yards down the road, 700,000-plus on smaller lots. The point I'm making is that those 46 purchasers who are available on the market will look at these homes, and not to look at these homes that have other options, if for some reason they're turned away because of the whole chicken issue. And that's what I'm asking you all to consider in going forward also, is that you have certain areas of Cobb County now that are developing in a way where you're not going to have chickens. I mean, all the statistics, everything you want to talk about, other areas where chickens are allowed, I don't think you see a whole lot in Atlanta Country Club. And these house values here are going up in the range of Atlanta Country Club. And so I would just simply, I mean, I love Brian and his family. I just think unfortunately, these this use is inconsistent with the properties that are surrounding Wesley Hills and are going up and down the road. And, but you've already identified over in, on the other end, I don't think they're going to be putting two, you know, chicken coops on all those properties too, but that would be allowed based upon the size of their properties. I'm sure they have restrictive covenants. But the point being that everything that's happening now on Wesley Chapel is inconsistent with the direction that, you know, some people are going in, which is the backyard chickens. Again, nothing against chickens, love them, but pragmatically, I think it will affect property values here because of the type of homes going in and the extremely limited number of potential purchases in the market. Thank you.
Thank you, Keith. Just for the record, anyone else here opposed to or wish to speak to, LUP 13? Okay, not seeing, hearing any. This is in District 2, so I'm going to leave the discussion here. Cases like this are always difficult. There are always several considerations, distinct considerations, that we have to sort through and, and look at and consider. Number one is whether the applicant is really aware of all of the guidelines that Cobb County has in place. And Brian and I have talked, and I know that he is. I know that he understands all the rules and regulations, especially the one related to cleanliness. He's spent some time talking about that just a moment ago. Number two is, is there support from the neighbors or opposition? And we heard from Keith here, and then I have heard from four others other than Keith, some of whom we thought were going to be in favor, but all of them have said, have now said to me, either by phone or by email, that they've changed their mind. And they really hope that we don't approve this. And then number three, is there any other evidence that we need to consider that would either support the applicant's claim that he would take good care of these hens and, and keep it nice and clean, or is there evidence that just the opposite might occur? And that's difficult. Ryan sent me a nice email a couple of days ago, and he asked that very question. He was concerned that some of the comments that were found in the staff recommendations or staff comments referenced the other code enforcement issues that he has, has been dealing with. And to his credit, he has taken care of most of that. But that does weigh into this, because I think how this family has reacted in the past to code issues may be, maybe, we don't know, but may be indicative of how these chickens might be kept. Recent code enforcement complaints related to the front yard contain some language that he was concerned about, and so was I, which prompted me to go out and look at it. It says simply, "The front yard, Brian's front yard, contains debris," and, and he gave a list, and I won't go into that. There was a truck and some barrels and some other things, "which was unsightly, unkept, unclean, causing an eyesore to the neighbors." Brian took exception to that, but that's what the inspector saw. I verified some of this by my own visit. Clearly, an effort has been made to clean that up. I have seen the efforts that he has put into that, although I don't think. In fact, his yard is the most unusual yard on the entire street. I think he even admitted that. He said to me, "My yard is simply different aesthetically." It's a clever way to put it, but that's true. It's a natural yard. It doesn't have grass and shrubbery and flowers and that sort of thing. But it does, it did have that unkept appearance. So it may be attractive to you. It certainly is not to your neighbors. All of them have told me that. So I, I am concerned about if the front yard is in that shape, and I saw a compost pile that's still there and some other things that I still think should be cleaned up. It just makes me wonder about the backyard where the chickens would be. And then we've heard from, from five neighbors, five different ones. I brought emails with me today to reference them if I needed to. And they all pretty much reflect what Keith told us here. They just think it's an inappropriate thing to have in a platted subdivision. I'm not sure the HOA has strict rules and regulations about keeping poultry. I frankly don't think they do. And they're not representing the HOA in that regard, but they just, as neighbors, they were saying they hope that we don't approve it. It's going to be hard for me to support this, given all of this. I know that your intentions are good. Brian said he hopes that his young children can help him maintain the coops, but the children are very young, so I'm not sure that'll be very helpful to you going forward. These coops have to be cleaned. And the runs especially have to be cleaned several times a week. I'm concerned about pests. I am concerned about odors. I'm concerned about pest runoff during a heavy rain event. And the neighbors, especially behind you, that are downhill from you, all expressed to me their extreme worry and concern about that. So any comments or questions while, anybody? Okay, I'm going to make a recommendation then that we deny, LUP 13. I just don't think this is appropriate in a platted subdivision that we have here. I am going to recommend that we allow 60 days from BOC acceptance, Board of Commissioner acceptance of this motion to remove the hens from the property. I hope that's sufficient. And we'll, we'll see what they think about that. But that's going to be my motion. Okay, we have a second from Thea. Any further discussion? Okay, let's call for the vote. Okay, so that's how we're going to go. Brian, keep in mind that you do need to go to the Board of Commissioners with this in a couple of weeks. I'd suggest you get in touch with your commissioner, I think this will be Bob Ott. Talk to him about it ahead of time, see if you can convince them to let you keep the hens, but my recommendation's going to be for denial. Okay, let's move on. John, what's next, please?
Yes, sir. LUP 14, Wislaw Adam Miziac, request a land's permit for the purpose of allowing more unrelated adults than permitted by code in Land Lot 671 of the 16th District. The property is located on the southwest end of West Bridge Place, west of Stony Brook Lane. Is the applicant present? The director of the applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP 14? Let the director show us, no one opposed.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Just give us your name and go right ahead.
I'm looking for...
Your name?
My name is Wislaw Adam Miziac.
Okay.
I'm asking for temporary permit to have two unrelated tenants in my property. Till this complaint, I didn't realize that I'm in contrary with the county rules, because for me it was one or two, I took two. But anyway, briefly, the reason is that my intention was and it is to sell the house. Here, if you can show, this is on public record. After five years, in June, I received, I mean, I received last year, the final decree and divorce, divorce and final decree, which has been closed in June, but my ex-wife is in Europe more than here, and she occupies more than half of the house. So she's coming back in two weeks, and I will, when she will move out, I have lots of work of preparation house to put on the market. Repainting, flooring, and roofing, and landscaping. Because of this five years' history of the second divorce, I was doing a basic maintenance, so I'm behind on many issues, and the house needs, is calling for lots of money. And also, due to my health and this divorce, I retired three years ago, but I wasn't able to live out of this social security of 1,100 a month. So seven weeks ago, I accepted full-time job, and I don't know how long I can keep it, but I need time for this transition, you know, to keep the job, have some income, and organize all these contractors to bring the house to the sellable value. Briefly, my history is full of compromises, because in 2005, I bought an unbuildable lot. I improved it, I spent too much money to improve, and I built a house. I took the break of my profession for almost two years, and it was hot market, but the house didn't sell for the money that I spent. So I was compromised, and we moved into that house, me and my wife. And because I put my HELOC money and two years of my labor, we got dispute, and it was the main reason that we were fighting all these years, from '07, I mean, '07, I had one divorce, I withdraw, then I filed on 12, the second time divorce, because all these 10 years, my ex-wife was occupant of the house, but not participant. So finally, I have this divorce, I have the decree that house is granted to me. I was always under title by myself, and my intention was to sell the house and make a profit. The house is too big for me, I have health conditions, all I need is 1,000 square feet, so I'm downsizing. And this is my goal, you know, to keep the job as long as I can and organize this remodeling gradually, as I can afford to keep the job and lead remodeling, and then to sell the house, and I won't be in conflict with any regulations. Coming back to these details, I build a house, ranch and unfinished basement. I pull all permits by myself. At that time, I was able, I was instructed by inspectors that I can finish the house the way I want, lower basement. So I finished the half of the basement for my youngest brother. He was in and out, but he moved to, for good, to Europe. Then I finished another half, and I didn't know till just recently that I might have only one unrelated tenant, okay? So, but one tenant is like a part of my family. He's older than me, he has bypasses and no prostate, he has health, you know, problems. I assist him all these nine years, and he assists my living as well. So I need time for him as well to look for a good, reasonable accommodation, and maybe, you know, future buyer will buy this house with this tenant, because she's not willing to move, so we have this, you know, another compromise, okay? That's why I'm looking for one year or up to two years to be on the safety side, for the permit to keep it a status quo, so to speak. And let me finish this house to be sellable, and I'll get something smaller.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, have a seat, please. You can have a seat.
Pardon me?
You can have a seat now.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just for the record, I think we had no one opposed, but anyone else wishing to speak to LUP 14? Not seeing any, it's back to this group. Judy, I believe this one's yours as well.
Goodie. This was the result of a complaint that was filed by somebody in the neighborhood, I'm assuming. The occasions I went out there, I saw one vehicle parked. If you would come back up, I have a couple of questions that I didn't, you might have answered and I missed it somehow or another. It says, "Two related." That would be you and your brother live there?
Right now, I have, I have one unrelated tenant, and the other one, I'm just trying to help him because he went through divorce and bankruptcy, and he keeps the furniture only, he doesn't live. So right now, there is two house, I mean, two people in the house, which is more than 4,000 square feet. By this investigation, I found out that my house is sized up to, up to 11 occupants and six cars. I never had more than four people and four cars in my house for all this time.
Okay, so how many do you have right now? How many people living in your house?
Three people.
Three people live there right now?
Yeah.
One is related to you.
Pardon me?
One related to you.
No, both are not related.
What happened to the brother?
He...
Did he die?
Oh, he went to Poland.
Oh, he went, oh, okay. So the brother was living there, though, didn't you say that?
He dropped to alcoholism, okay, and he went back to old country.
Oh, okay. So that was the related one that was living there?
That's how I started. I finished the basement for my youngest brother.
Okay, okay.
And then, you know, I wasn't able, because I didn't have support from my ex-wife, to keep the house and payments.
So you live upstairs?
Yeah, we live upstairs, and...
You and your divorced wife live upstairs?
Two units.
And then downstairs, who lives there? The two that are, need help, the two individuals that need help live in the basement?
Two individuals are in the basement.
And they have a car each?
Yes.
And then the two that live upstairs have a car each?
Actually, my ex, she doesn't have a car, and she's not here. Most of the time, she's not here. She's coming back in two weeks, and she has to move out, because everything is closed.
Okay, so the ex will be moving out, then it would just be you and your two in the basement?
Yes, 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 ma'am.
Okay. And the two in the basement, do they work?
No, one is retired and pretty sick, and the other one works, yes.
And you help take care of them?
Do I help what?
Do you help take care of them? Do you help them, like? Do you help them, like, go to the doctor, or do you help them do anything? Or you just rent the rooms to them? Is that what you do?
Do you care for those two in the basement at all? Are you...
For one, yeah.
Do you assist them?
For all nine years, yeah.
Yeah, how do you assist them? I mean, what do you do for them?
Oh, we do shopping around. I, you know, I provide some cooking sometimes.
They're not related to you, though, in any way?
No, he's not related.
Okay.
Okay. So you just rent those out, the rooms downstairs out?
Yes. And I could provide details how it happened. During this trial, divorce trial, my ex-wife must, you know, corrupt one appraisal, and he was the one who filed the complaint. He's not living in Marietta, he's not living in our county, he's from Cherokee. But during this process, to evaluate what do we have, the judge asked us to provide appraisals. So I appraised the house, and she hired his appraisal, and his figure was twice bigger than mine, okay? So the judge didn't take this appraisal under consideration. After one year, I reflected, you know, he extended my divorce process and made me to pay for this additional time of lawyers. I filed complaint to Georgia Board of Appraisals, and I won.
Okay.
The appraisal was cited and penalized with small penalty, and I don't know what happened after this, but he's the one who, after a long time, he filed complaint.
Complaint against you. So you rent it?
Just in a plain revenge, you know?
So how much do you charge? Is this like one bedroom, they rent a piece, or is there a living area down there besides the bedrooms?
One apartment has about 1,100, the other one has about 1,000.
So you have two apartments down there?
Yes.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you. I believe that made up my mind. Okay. Sometimes we have difficult cases, especially with the result of a complaint coming in. This is a single-family area. It's, some of the houses are nice and some of them are not so nice, but it's, it's an area that looks like young families are moving in. I think anytime that you make two apartments in the basement, that has become into a boarding house to me. So my suggestion would be, and this is where I'm probably going to need some help from my fellow commissioners, I'm going to make a recommendation to turn this down, but now I need to figure out a time limit to give them, where I want to be reasonable, where they have time to find another place to live.
He indicated he was fixing the house up to sell. But then he said a year or two to accomplish that, and we can't go that long.
No, I don't want to give him that long.
Ninety days?
I think it would take more than 90 days in order to find a place and move out, and I was thinking, since there's no opposition, I was thinking six months, that would give them enough time to find a place and move out. That's my compassionate side showing here. John, what do you think about six months? Do you think that would give them ample time? Oh, I'm so glad.
Thank you, John, for that.
I was really worried, John, it wouldn't be okay with you. So you think that it was a reasonable amount of time?
Yeah.
No, okay, all right. Then I would like to make the motion that we deny this application, give the applicant six months to remove his two tenants, and that time would start from the Board of Commissioners.
And actually, he'd be allowed to keep one unrelated adult, but my concern, too, is...
I think what he's alluding to, if we have him move, he's trying, by his own admission, he's trying to fix up the house and put it on the market, so...
Right, but I'm just saying, he's allowed to have one unrelated, but my concern is there's apartments in there.
That would, that was...
And they really need to be, that needs to be a single-family home, not this thing set up with separate apartments and that. So that...
That's why I'm turning it down.
Turning to John, what, how would we address that? Do we want to have...
What you want to do is just put a clerk's note on it for code enforcement to go out and take a look at the house, because it may not be true apartments, maybe just the way...
The way he described it, and I think that might be what it is. All right, and then we'll put a clerk's note that code enforcement go out and inspect it to see if it needs to be made into one dwelling, I mean, a basement, a true basement, not apartments. Because then I think Rocky would have to get involved, and Rocky don't want to get involved. I see him now.
Rocky?
Rocky.
You can get up all these names for people.
You went from Rock to Rocky.
Rocky, so he knew I was talking about...
He's been taking boxing lessons.
And Puff and...
We got Puff and Rocky and Corky.
Corky, okay.
So that would be my motion.
We're getting giddy toward the end of the day. Okay, we have a motion and a second to deny. Any further comments? Let's call for the vote. Okay, that's our decision. No, once we're done, that's it. I can't take any more testimony, okay? It'll go to the BOC, the Board of Commissioners, in two weeks, back in this chamber, same time, right here, okay? And you'll need to come and do the same thing for them and talk to them as well. Yeah, if you need longer than that time, you can ask for it.
And John?
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Peterson? We are done. Let's see, we have some minutes, minutes to approve. Let's see what we have here.
And we approved the minutes of the July 24, 2017 meeting.
In July 12.
As presented.
In July, July 12.
And the July 12.
Okay, as presented. We have a second from Skip, all in favor of approving the minutes. We have one abstention, I understand that. Okay, one abstention from Ms. Powell, otherwise approved. Thank you very much. We stand...